After six, welcome everybody. Will you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
And for translation tonight, we have Carla Preciado. Carla?
Good evening. Yo soy Carla Preciado. Si alguien desea servicios de traducción, por favor, me pueden decir. Yo voy a estar atrás del salón. Gracias.
We have headsets for the hearing impaired, if you need them. Announcements, introductions, proclamations. Dr. Sarves?
We do have one brief presentation. Tonight, we have a number of students in the after-school education and safety Aces program at La Cumbre Junior High School participate -- who participate in the school's theater program. La Cumbre will be performing Grease the first week in May, and a few theater and Aces students are here to sing two songs for the production. Joanne Caines, Principal Joanne Caines, would you want to make the introduction, or is it Debbie Badger, who's our director of Aces, let's see, Healthy Start and AOK programs? I know, you're all set to sing.
Good evening. It's both of us.
Very good.
And it's a pleasure to be here.
Definitely. I know I was here a couple of months ago to explain to you and educate you on what the Aces program does, but it gives me a great deal of pleasure tonight to introduce a portion of our theater group. Our theater program at La Cumbre, Aces Program, after-school program, is one of the larger programs, as well as our sports program, under the direction of Mr. Gary Smith. And they have about another month before their production, which, as Dr. Sarves just said, will be May 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th. And I believe somebody has some tickets for the board members and staff if they wish to attend. But they have about another month of practice, but they're here tonight to share a couple of songs with you. So I'd like to introduce the La Cumbre Theater Group and their Grease songs.
Dr. Sarves, any other announcements or introductions?
That's it for tonight.
On item C3, closed session. The motion was made by Deacon, seconded by Parker, to ratify the appointment of Dr. Kerry Mills to the position of Executive Director of Special Education effective July 1, 2010. The motion passed for yes, zero no, and one absent, Dr. Noel. And Dr. Noel has asked to talk about that.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did not attend closed session because I had some serious procedural objections to the way this appointment was handled. And under the Brown Act, the closed session was agendized as a personnel issue, and procedural issues have to be discussed in public. So I couldn't go into the closed session and discuss what I really wanted to discuss. And I did not want to vote on the issue and thereby implicitly endorsing the procedures. So I simply did not attend. I don't normally play hooky.
Thank you, Dr. Noel. Under public comments, C4. Oh, by the way, Dr. Mills, stand up, and let's say hi to you and welcome you. C4, public comments.
We have two public comment requests. Peter Nushal, followed by Kate Smith.
Do I press talk first?
No.
Okay. I'm here on behalf of the South Coast Community Aquatic Center. We've been before the board before in raising money to build what is now Ealing's Pool at Dos Pueblos High School. I just wanted to get into your minutes around your video, sort of a chronology of our latest project, which is to build bleachers at Dos Pueblos High School. We gave $990 some time ago for the Department, Division of State Architects, and some plans were produced in November. This, by the way, has taken several years. We put down $6,000. Deposit was, which was ostensibly for advertising and producing plans and preparing a bid. That was done. At the same time, we produced, we had an MOU with the district, a memorandum of understanding, which said we were to participate in that process and review the plans and review the bid and so on. Before it went out, we were not given that opportunity. It went out without any notice to us. We went, came down here, got the plans, got the bid package, took the plans to the pool and learned that, in fact, the plans that were given out for the bid were incorrect. And there's no argument about this. They simply were. I don't know what the impact of that is on the bid. The bid, by the way, came in over $20,000 above Santa Barbara School District's estimate, which is hard for us, okay? The bid is $127,792. That was a low bid. I think the other one was an additional $10,000, and the company is Skipper. We rushed, as you probably know, to get you that $127,000 before your last meeting. We didn't get on the agenda and for unfortunate reasons, and so I believe you're going to discuss this today. The latest item that I'd like to sort of put into your minutes is that, as part of that MOU, we were told there would be a $10,200 inspection fee. I have since learned that this involves paying someone $85 an hour for up to two weeks to sit and watch somebody assemble pre-constructed bleachers. And I understand that's probably the way things are. I have to tell you, though, that that, in our correspondence and preparing the MOU, that was a proposed amount. What I've learned, I guess, after your last meeting, it is an actual amount. And this is of great concern to us because we're being pushed to the limit on being able to pay for these things. You have our $127,792. We're going to have a lot of trouble with this $10,200. To date, I asked for how much you spent on the six, of the $6,000 we gave you, and none has been spent. So maybe you should take that into consideration. But I just wanted to get sort of a chronology in the brief time I have, how much money we've given you, when you've given it, when you've received it, and what, you know, we haven't been able to participate in, you know, in this process as we were supposed to in this MOU. And I know you're working with other parent groups at Dos Pueblos and so on, but that, I think, sets a little bit of a disturbing precedent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nushal. Kate Smith?
President Herron, members of the Santa Barbara Board of Education, my daughter Emily Rose Smith turned 21 on March 21st. It was not the traditional drink yourself drunk presentation of the classic car keys celebration. At my son's 21st birthday, he shaved his head bald and gave his hair to Locks of Love. So did his girlfriend. So I invited all of Emily's friends, classmates, teachers, and angels to our downtown house on Mission Canyon, the Orange House, where the Dalai Lama's group lived, until Judge Andry threw them out because he objected to the parking problems when the Dalai Lama or his teacher, the Rinpoche, would visit. It was a magical night, although we forgot to do the hokey pokey and sing "You Light Up My Life." So we did that at my Passover Seder, and my silk slippers caught fire from the sparkers. I am submitting a list of 20 parents and colleagues who bought books at Chaucer's and donated to public school libraries. Many thanks to Mari Curly for participating in this event. I gave three questions to Open Alternative School and Star King in honor of Emily Rose Smith's 21st birthday. She read the three questions and the answers at her birthday because she went to Open Alternative School. And my daughter, mentally retarded, learned to read because she was loved and embraced by master teachers and the schools of our dreams. In honor of Emily Rose Smith's 21st birthday, the President of the Board, Ed Herron, donated the three questions to the school of my choice, and that choice was Cesar Chavez Dual Immersion Charter School. Thank you, Ed Herron. Eric Schenker, CPA, donated the three questions. It's by Jonathan Muth, but it's based on a story by Leo Tolstoy. I hope we will all learn the three questions and the answers and teach our children to live and love every day. Eric Schenker donated the three questions to Roosevelt and Honey and, sorry, Rachel 32nd?
And Tony Johansson donated the three questions in honor and memoriam, in memory of Honey Sanquist, to Santa Barbara Charter School. Tony and Rachel Johansson donated the Canterbury Tales by Chaucer in honor of Emily Rose Smith's 21st birthday celebration, March 12, 2010, in honor of Honey Sanquist. One that appella with a Shaw Soto the draught of March hath presided to the rota and bathed each vein in swish lacour, of which verto engendered is the floor. I went to Castilea.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Palo Alto.
That concludes public comment?
There were many more books donated in honor of my daughter. I will submit them to the Santa Barbara School District.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Okay, D1 facilities, on the consent agenda, D1 and D2. Mrs. Deacon?
Well, I was going to pull D1, although Mr. Nushal left, because I was hoping we could talk about it before he left. If the board would prefer to come back to this at the end, that's okay, too. I just wanted to clarify a few things with Mr. Hattian.
We do have a 620, I'm certain, for public hearings, so.
So we can come back to it first.
Come back to it, okay. Now, you want to pull D1 and D2 both?
No, just D1. Just D1.
How about D2?
Moved to approve?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried on D2. We'll come back to D1. 620? Actually, 619. We can stall for a minute, okay? Public hearing for proposed Adelante Charter School. Dr. Sarves?
Let me just describe where we are in this process. In March, the former Cesar Chavez group met with the board with a draft charter, which they have called the Adelante Charter School. We had some discussion about that. After that meeting, the Adelante Charter School petitioners gave us a petition for a new charter. And board members, you have that petition. You have a number of related documents as well, and I'll comment on just a couple of those. Those came in on March 24. Well, March 24 is significant because that sets the timeline for the board hearing and for final board action. The general law regarding new charter petitions is found in Ed Code Section 47605. And board, you have a complete set of that in the board agenda. The timeline for a charter petition requires a public hearing within 30 days of receipt and the board decision within 60 days. Tonight's hearing is that public hearing. It's an informational-only public hearing on the provisions of the charter, at which time the board shall quote, and I'm quoting from Ed Code, "Consider the level of support for the petition by teachers employed by the district, other employees of the district, and parents." And that's out of Ed Code Section 47605. We've worked with the petitioners, and in fact, the board has worked with the petitioners, on comments about the draft proposal. I forwarded the comments that I received from board members so that the petitioners had those comments to help guide their process. Many of the suggestions have been incorporated into the final charter petition, others have not. Due to the Cesar Chavez School having been recently identified as one of the persistently lowest achieving schools in California's successor, Adelante Charter School faces strict scrutiny. And I'm pleased that the petitioners recognize that. And board members, you have, at the end of these documents, you have a document that addresses the concerns about Cesar Chavez School being on the list of lowest achieving schools. And we expect some California Department of Education scrutiny on this, but we don't know just what it will look like yet because they're developing their rules on the run. You know, they just put out the list, and they'll have to decide what to do with it. But in your documentation, you will see that this group has selected the transformation model, and I'm hoping that later the petitioners will comment on that as well. And you see the provisions of that in terms of school culture, in terms of staffing at the school, and the other elements. It's almost the last couple of pages. Yeah, very good. Although the purpose of tonight's hearing is limited, board members may want to provide any preliminary comments they have to inform this process going forward. The Adelante group has signaled its willingness to accept edits, and I believe would particularly want board members to state which things are critical in order for board members to ultimately vote the petition up or down. They've been asking for that. They're still asking for that, and I'm sure they'd like as much direction as they can receive from the board. For the staff's part, there's been insufficient time since the petition was filed to prepare a substantive staff report, and formal board review of the petition will occur at a later meeting. Staff have been looking at the documents. Board, you may want to ask staff for some of their preliminary opinions. I've heard from a number of staff members, heard legal opinions, and there are a number of things that we'll want to relay back to the petitioners. Following this public meeting, staff will prepare a report to the board that will evaluate all aspects of the petition and will serve to guide the board's further deliberations. Key issues in the education code I'd like to identify that will be evaluated and discussed in our subsequent staff report will include the following. First of all, whether the petition presents a sound educational program for the pupils who will be enrolled in the charter school. That's a key element. Secondly, whether the petitioners are demonstrably likely to successfully implement the plan set forth in the petition. That is also a key element. I have these written down, so I'll know exactly how they're spelled out in Ed Code. Whether the petition contains reasonably comprehensive descriptions of the 17 specified elements set forth in Ed Code 47605. Four, whether if significant shortcomings exist in the petition that could lead to denial, there are modifications that would adequately overcome the deficiencies. And five, whether the petition, if it is to be approved, should be for a shorter period than five years. The final review by staff will be completed by Wednesday, April 21. I believe that will provide us sufficient time to complete that process. And I expect the board to schedule a time to hear that staff report before you go to the final consideration of voting the petition up or down. And I expect to involve the petitioners in that process because I'm sure they'll want to weigh in as well. Well, for tonight's presentation, we have Lee Fleming and the other petitioners. Lee, I don't know how you have your team lined up, and perhaps you're the only presenter at the moment, who will want to make comments about their charter petition.
Dr. Sarves, I'd like that one question on your timeline, and maybe Mrs. Fleming can talk about this. I was under the impression that the 27th of this month was a pretty critical date, and was planning on having the final vote or suggesting the final vote to be on the 27th. But that doesn't seem to be in line with what you just said, so I'd like to make sure that's part of your comments.
Yeah, maybe we can talk about that. We thought that the initial date was because by the end of May, new starter, startup grant money applications were due, but that was the end of March. So I'm sure the petitioners will want to respond to that as well.
Thank you. Board, do you want to hear the, from the school first, or do you have any comments first or questions?
Yes, but do we want to?
No, let's hear the, we'll hear the presentation, Mrs. Fleming.
Okay. Well, I actually will address the timeline question. Actually, in addition to a funding issue, it's actually a deadline for State Board of Education numbering.
Can you use the mic?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm going to give this to you, but this is a deadline for State Board of Education numbering. And we've called ahead and put a marker place for us for the May meeting to let them know. The deadline is actually April 14th for the submission package, so that's really an important date. We have had some people interacting with people at the state who've indicated that they'll hold that place for us. But either way, beyond April would be really problematic for us, just for a state number. And, you know, just the timing of new charter versus, you know, the timing isn't ideal, but that's for State Board of Education number, which, as a new charter, we would request a new number.
May I ask for clarification?
Yes.
Are you suggesting that you would need board approval before, before the 14th?
I'm suggesting that that's the charter submission package deadline, but we do have people who've been interacting with people at the state. I mean, ideally, it would be by the 14th, but that's ideal. So.
So that if the board approved the charter petition sometime after the 14th, where would that leave us?
Well, the State Board of Education meeting is in May, and we already have a place marker for that. So we, even though we didn't have the proper documentation ready, they've placed a marker for us on that date. So we have a marker there. The meeting is in May, so if the vote were to occur after, in May, we would be too late for that meeting. So I think we have to be ready by the May meeting. So I think May 1st would still be a deadline that we would be requesting.
Okay, we'll go.
Well, there's a, there's a two-day board meeting in May, there's a two-day board meeting in July, and it just seems to me that if we don't make that 14th deadline, that it would bounce to the next state board meeting in July, I'm guessing.
That's true, but we can't establish our, right? We can't establish our, our, or our articles of incorporation, is that correct, Nancy? I'm going to turn it over to somebody smart.
Or Lisa, talk to the state. The deadline that I gave the state was April 27th, thinking that was the last board meeting of this month. And every indication was given to me that as long as we put this marker in and we've placed the application in for our CDS number, that it would be on the May agenda for the State Board of Education. I'm not so sure what's going to happen if we don't make that marker. We can find out, and there's another meeting in July. But what might happen if we're not, if we don't meet the May deadline for them, is that our funding may be delayed because we don't have a number and we won't get any money. So it takes them time to establish the charter.
What, I mean, there are lots of categories of money. You're not talking about all categories. What money won't you?
Well, I don't think, know for sure if we're officially a charter school without a CDS number.
There's also the issue, the reason I was shooting for the 27th was.
The 27th is what I was.
There's also the issue of making sure that the school is perceived as being in operation so that you can get your registrations and get things, get your teachers and get planning going for the next year.
Right.
So I was under the impression the 27th was the date and was a very important date. And so that was going to be my suggestion, that we aim for the 27th.
That's, that's as far as I got with the CDE. I didn't think it would be beyond the 27th of this month.
Mrs. Parker?
As far as the charter school startup grant, the old grant cycle ended on March 31st, and the new cycle starts July 1st. So as soon as we have the charter approved, we could submit that application and also, and then there's like a couple of weeks turnaround before they notify you if you, if you're eligible for that.
Mrs. Parker?
I just want to chime in that this board actually has experience with a charter coming to us in May, and getting its CDS number was not an issue. I think it would, if we had, we ended up denying that petition, but if it had come, if we had passed it, it would simply have gotten it in the July meeting, and it would still have started on time in August or September.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that.
My concern in terms of the dates are that it takes a long time for staff to do a full review, and we'll probably get that full review just a few days before the meeting on the 27th. And I don't want to, we've given a lot of, we voted to give a lot of collaborative effort with Cesar Chavez and the new Adelante Charter in this new charter petition process, but now that we've gotten to the point where we are actually going through the approval or denial process, I think it's really important that we take the time that we need to do it right and not treat this charter necessarily differently than we would treat any other charter. I think we need to be very careful of that.
Let's, let's move forward with your presentation, and we can, we're not going to make any decisions, obviously, tonight, but you, and I wanted to make comment that even though we have worked with you, it's been as individuals through Dr. Sarves or directly with many of you, but it's not the board that has done anything collaborative, together, jointly, in any way, shape, or form, and there is no group consensus on anything. So anything you received was strictly from individuals, and you can take it for what it's worth, you know, as you got it. And I'm, I see a lot of things you did. Each single concern that was given to you, you, you did, and you did something about. So I appreciate that very much. Lee?
Yeah, thank you. And just to reiterate the request on the date, and I will move forward, we do have, you know, employees currently that will be applying for a new job essentially at Adelante, and so out of courtesy also to the teaching staff who may or may not be placed in Adelante to have opportunity to seek a job is very important to us as a community and also for our families who are coming into kinder. It's a little, a little scary for them to not really be sure. So the date request isn't meant to pressure anybody, it's just a reality of what we're here for. So I'll leave the date thing to you, and then I'll move on Adelante, so.
Mr. President?
Dr. Noel?
I still didn't really get a clear answer to my question. Charter schools are funded by block grants. Is that in jeopardy by these dates? Okay. Charter schools also, new startup charter schools are eligible for a startup grant. Is that in jeopardy by these dates?
Potentially. I mean, potentially, the longer we wait.
And new start, new charter schools are eligible for revolving loan fund. Those are the only ones I'm aware of. Okay? But those are quite separate.
April 30th is the revolving loan.
And if I understand correctly, you can, you can get, you cannot get the revolving loan fund, but that's pretty pro forma. You cannot get a startup grant, but you still get your block grant once you have an SBE number. Okay? So the requirement you're talking about that has an early deadline is that the charter schools division requires an SBE number before they'll accept your application for a startup grant?
Right.
Okay. So the school could go on without that startup grant?
Yes, yes, yes.
I should ask that question. I'll ask Mrs. Dow. Can the school go on if it does not get a startup grant?
One thing that happens in May is that we have to file a charter survey form, let's do May 31st, that gives an advance apportionment to new charter schools so that you get money in advance because you're working with no reserves. So if we miss the May 31st deadline, don't have a CDS number at that time, then it will delay and create cash flow problems as we're going to be in the same timeline as everybody else next year, which is deferral after deferral for the state money. We will still get our property tax monies on the 15th of every month, but all the charter block grant, the state aid monies will be, will be on the same deferrals other charter schools. be on the same deferrals other charter schools. Do you understand that?
I think so.
Okay. So May 31st is another deadline without a CDS number that would be problematic, because we have a survey to fill out that says, and a con app to fill out in June, that will also secure our Title I and No Child Left Behind, but-
Has this issue of, of, of the issue of charter school eligibility for after-school program funds, and those kinds of categorical funds, of new charter schools eligibility, had, my recollection of, a few months ago, that they were not eligible?
No.
But has that been resolved favorably for charter schools?
For after-school programs?
Yeah.
Direct-funded charter schools are eligible for the supplemental, supplemental hourly programs, which could be-
New, new ones? New ones?
Oh, new ones.
Yeah. Because that, that was the issue some months ago.
Yeah, actually, yeah, a new charter school probably not eligible for that.
And it was a part of the legislation.
Right. But we, we've never actually applied for that before, so I don't know whether that's something we would-
Okay, Mrs. Fleming?
Okay. Okay. Will you go ahead and turn the light on? Okay. We're going paper today, so. Sure, that'd be great. Okay. Well, we just wanted to kind of focus a little bit on, on, I know we're going to get into a lot of details, so we wanted to just kind of do overview-focused things, kind of overview of the purpose of, of why we're here at this public hearing. So, so it's kind of three main kind of pieces, that we're really here to provide a high-quality two-way immersion opportunity for families in Santa Barbara. So that's the purpose of this school. And then I want to kind of review some of the key pieces of implementation, to make sure that the school's successful, and then, of course, allow the public hearing piece where you may express concern. So I just saw this this morning, I thought was, I know I emailed it to some of you, I don't know if you saw it, I just thought it was great. So relevancy of two-way immersion, well, April 6, 2010, this was in the Washington Post, and I just thought was online. So it's Stephen Levinson, who does a little spot on Political Bookworm each day, says, "Though it seems intuitively reasonable that the more time spent on learning English, the better it is learned. Findings increasingly suggest that students taught in both their native language and English outperform similar children in all English classes on tests of English reading proficiency. This is the case from elementary through high school. Findings especially support dual-language immersion as most effective for developing proficiency in two languages across the curriculum. Dual-language immersion programs also have been found to produce the fewest numbers of students dropping out of school." So it's just kind of a quick snapshot. And so the key here is high quality. What is a high-quality two-way immersion program? And so, as we kind of started doing this research back early in the fall, I found this, I found this piece from Kathy Lindholm-Leary at a conference she presented in, in 2009 in Oregon, and she was responding to the question, "Does a dual-language program always show better outcomes in comparison to non-dual-language peers?" Well, obviously, the answer to that is no. She says, "Quality of a program can vary considerably. Like in any other program, higher-quality programs produce higher outcomes," period. However, people cannot expect a poor-quality dual-language program to produce high-quality results. But even average-quality dual-language programs can produce outcomes that are at least comparable to outcomes in average, non-dual-language programs." And so I think it's really important to recognize that what, what the goal is here is to make sure we have a high-quality two-way immersion school, so that we can get to the outcomes that he's talking about here. And so, this isn't in color, but I think it's pretty clear. I know you've seen this kind of research before from Thomas &amp; Collier, and this is actually from a series of strands of schools that have a program within a school that's two-way immersion. And so this is, these are the students in the big, kind of bolder ones, that are enrolled in the dual-language piece. So this is the EL group right here, and this is the EP group, or the English proficient students. And then here are the students in the same school, who are not enrolled in the program, who are EL students, and then this is the English proficient students, excuse me, this is the district average, and then these are the English proficient students. So, anyway, the point of this is that there's a huge gap here. We have this, you know, sort of performance gap that we all know about, between English learners and English proficient students. And in the dual-immersion program, you'll see that at the fifth grade level, the lowest group are the EL students. However, by the seventh grade, they have met with the average of the non-dual-language English proficient students. This is the non-dual-language English learners, okay? And then here, they've actually, they've, they've made up the gap, and have actually outperformed students in the same school who are English proficient. And this is the vision of a two-way immersion, and this is what a high-quality two-way immersion can yield. So when we were looking at what we, how to make sure we have high quality, the answer came through various conversations with experts, and what, what came out of it is, there are some good 50-50 programs out there. But if you look across the country, there are about 340 two-way immersion programs across the country, and the large majority of the schools that are seeing the success are 90-10. There are a couple of really good 50-50 programs, and she explained, you know, what the criteria was for those 50-50. However, for a population like our population, that has a higher English language percentage, English learner percentage, really what she suggested, and what all the experts we've talked to have suggested, is that we really should seriously convert and become a 90-10. And so as a, a new school, we're looking at high quality, we, we looked at all the schools that actually had that Thomas &amp; Collier curve, and those were the programs that we were seeking, and that's where the bulk of the material in our charter came from, was research of the high-quality programs. And again, reiterating that, that same piece from the Washington Post today, and then other researchers, that learning to read in the home language promotes reading achievement in the second language, and that's what a high-quality two-way immersion can do. So that's why we went with the 90-10. We just felt that there wasn't compelling enough evidence that a high-quality two-way immersion would come out of a 50-50, particularly for a population that had a large percentage of English learners. So I'm just kind of, the, the research behind that is strong literacy in the first language. How do you do that? You do that through a 90-10. And so I just wanted to kind of flash this up really quickly from our charter. So for those two, I know that the board members are familiar with this, but 90-10 is a bit of a confusing piece for people, because people think that you're 90% Spanish the whole time. You're not, actually. All students start together, heterogeneous grouping. At the kindergarten level, they start 90% Spanish, and then first grade, 90% Spanish. In second grade, they go to 80-20, and third grade, 70-30, and then fourth grade on, 50-50. So in terms of taking, in terms of implementing a 90-10 program, you really are only talking about starting with a kindergarten 90-10, and you build as you go. And so for the Adelante charter, the first year, we would only have our kindergarten, possibly first grade, depending on what Rosa Molina, we're, we're working, we're going to be working with Rosa Molina from Two Way Cave, and probably some other people, to give us some, the best advice on, on how we should do that implementation. But when we're talking about a 90-10, we're just talking about this first year being a kinder, possibly first grade. Mr. Noel? Oh, wait, I'm not allowed to call on you, but Mr.-
Dr. Noel?
Yeah. I just want to make sure I understood this. This, you said all students?
That's correct.
So English-only students will get 90% of their time in Spanish, and 10% of their time in kindergarten?
That's correct.
And in first grade, and that will be, that will go up to 50-50 by fourth grade, is that?
Yes.
Okay. So for English-only students, immersion works?
That's correct.
Immersion in Spanish.
Has to do with literacy.
But for Spanish-only students, immersion in English doesn't work.
That's right. It has to do with literacy in the primary language.
That's a curious, a curious, I'd like to see the studies on that.
Dr. Sarves?
Well, I'm glad you asked that question, because it wasn't until Beth and some others explained it to me, that I really understood that, that all students are, are starting in Spanish in the second language, or the minority language 90% of the time.
Do you want to add to that?
Mrs. Deacon?
Yeah, well, sorry, go ahead.
While we're on the 90-10 model, because I'm afraid we're going to move on, I want to get a chance to say this. I was not a believer initially, but I talked to Ms. Fleming last night, and I also have spent some more time reviewing this, and I, and I actually am, am much less concerned than I was previously about shifting to this model. And I also spoke to Mr. Hayden about the effect that this might have on STAR test results, and got some interesting news there. And maybe you could, Mr. Hayden, you might want to just address that briefly, the fact that in second grade, you, you feel that actually that the scores might, in fact, be higher, because they're, these are not written tests, but verbal tests, but by the third grade, we might see a dip, but in the end, those two would possibly even out?
Well, I'm, I'm, yes, that's true. That is what I was talking to you about. And, but the main thing I was talking to you about is that the, since the API is a growth measure, and the AYP is, if you use Safe Harbor, is also a growth measure, that there should be no problems, including grades two and three, if you're looking at the growth measure aspects of both of those scales. And I doubt that see, that Adelante would be actually making the AYP targets, they would probably only make the Safe Harbor targets. So that was the only thing I was going over, is that I don't think grades two and three will in any way negatively influence Adelante charter, charter in terms of making whatever academic marks that they're looking for.
Thank you. And I know we, we'll address some of those other things later, but that was directly one of my concerns about the 90-10, so I just wanted to bring it back to that, and I'm not concerned anymore. Thank you.
Dr. Noel?
Could you go back to the previous slide? No, it was a, it was a chart.
Oh, the chart.
Previous chart, that one, yeah. Is, is this a theoretical model, or is this empirical?
No, this is based on data.
What?
This is based, it's empirical. It's based on actual students at actual schools.
And what is the research base?
This is from, I, I can send you the source for this. This is from Lindholm-Leary out of a group of schools in New Mexico.
Yeah.
But I can, I'll, I have it in my set, I'll send it to you.
But the experience of Cesar Chavez charter school was not this.
That's correct.
And, and in fact, my recollection of data that Dr. Hayden gave us suggested that by seventh grade, they were in big trouble. Not to mention having been in trouble all the way along.
So we're presenting a new charter with a 90-10, and most of these programs are-
Okay, no, that's not, I'm not saying this because I want to bash you with bad data.
Okay.
I have a question. But so far, what I've heard is, what is new is the switch from 90-10, from 50-50 to 90-10. Is that the, is that the change that you expect to produce those kind of data?
No. This is based on high-quality two-way immersion schools. The large majority of them are 90-10, but the high-quality two-way immersion comes out of all of the specific pieces in the ed plan, including our, some of the pieces that are in our, our action plan, and in the benchmark tool. So the, the high-quality two-way immersion is now in this charter. It has not been in a charter in a two-way immersion school before, any of the specific pieces of what is a successful two-way immersion school.
Okay, let's go forward.
Okay, thank you. Right, so that's the question that maybe is being asked here, is how will the Adelante group assure high-quality implementation?
Well, we're waiting to hear.
Yes, yes, that's a great question. So we have an answer. I, I did want to, before we talk about some of the specifics of implementation, I, I did want to mention that our group is very unique to a school starting a new charter in two-way immersion. Most groups that are starting a two-way look at successful two-way immersion schools, and embed that into their charter. Rarely do they have the opportunity to experience firsthand a two-way immersion that wasn't able to achieve the results that you see. And so our group has learned not only what, through research, what goes into a two-way immersion, and through visiting other two-way immersions, but we've also learned some of the pitfalls, that other, other groups wouldn't have that knowledge. And so we, we feel that as a group, we're, we're very strong, and have probably a little bit more in-depth knowledge about what does and doesn't work in a two-way immersion school. So having said that, that's okay. It's just like my favorite little equation right here. So expectations and accountability is what leads to success, right? So, so what we're talking about is setting a clear set of expectations of what is a two-way immersion program. And so again, in this charter, anybody, anybody from off the street who was interested in education could come in and read this charter, and walk into a classroom, and identify whether or not what's happening in the classroom is reflective of the charter. That is key. The key to setting expectations is having a document that everybody in the community can look to, and it includes benchmark pieces, which we'll talk about, and of course, the accountability, which is in, in our benchmarks. And so that's how, that's how we will get to those things. We'll, we'll set clear expectations, and, and hold ourselves and our community accountable. So this is just one sample. I know that you have a copy of this, but this is our, our benchmark tool. And so each of our school-wide learning outcomes has a particular goal area, and so obviously, we're a language school, that's the primary area. And so this, this tool will be used, this is at risk, this is where we know we're, we're in big trouble. This is emerging, this is where, sort of the minimum bar, and then this is where we hope to be on track. And so for each of our school-wide learning outcomes, we have a section here. So I'll just give a couple samples. I know it's kind of, you know, nitty-gritty here, but for example, at least 60% of students are at grade level on L1 on DIBELS results. This doesn't just say in the upper grades, it says all the way across the board. The purpose of this is not to be punitive, but for us to look and say, "We are not here, why are we not here?" And so we have, you can go through and see all of these, I know that's been included in the documents. And so the idea of this is that twice a year, the school will go through this evaluation, at the beginning of the first and the, the second grading periods, and then at the end of the year, we can do a third assessment to see how we did overall. And so that's one example, if you'll go to the next section. Oh, sorry. So again, we, we, we have our values and our, the pieces that we really need to be successful. So another evaluation, so that one evaluated the, the students specifically, this one evaluates how well we're supporting the teachers. So staff show evidence of new research-based strategies implemented, they have scheduled time to share best practices, they observe each other and provide feedback, using formative assessment, sharing at least one best practice. There's professional learning community groups that show evidence of implementation of new strategies, staff members attend professional development at the district and state level. So we're not just assessing the specific success of the students in the classroom, we're also assessing whether or not we're providing the correct support for our teachers. And so if you'll go to the next one. So, so that's where the, the board of directors can bring in those resources as needed. So a lot of schools have tons of data. We have had data, at every school I've ever worked, we have tons of data that we just kind of look at, and we flash on the screen, right? Well, the, the purpose of the benchmark is to allow us opportunities to ask questions. So for example, we see in one of our areas, 50% of our students, oh, I must have copied and pasted, 50% of our students are not on grade level in writing assessment, but our teachers are sharing best practices each year. So then we can ask ourselves, well, what are those best practices? For next quarter, let's have students, the teachers share best practices specifically in writing development to address that area, the shortcoming that we had. So the purpose of that benchmark tool is to give a whole picture, and we can relate those pieces to each other if we're looking at this twice a year. And so, and again, once at the end. So this, the purpose of this tool is to allow the whole school community to understand what the expectations are, and this, to lead to the accountability, if you'll go to the next one. So this is a part of the principal evaluation tool. And so right here, it says, "School benchmark tool scoring is emerging for the majority of benchmarks." So if the school's not at least in that middle category, then that's part of that evaluation for, for administration. And similarly, if you'll see on our action plan, in May, we will, the teachers and principal will work together to create a similar tool for teachers, and they can work through some of the current trends in assessment. And so one of the neat things I like about the benchmark tool is it assesses both the outputs, which is a really common thing we do in education, right? How are the students doing, and what are they getting? But it also measures the inputs, what are we putting into the school to make sure that we're seeing success? So it's a really 360 kind of tool to assess how well we're doing as a school. And there are other areas you can look at, I just kind of highlighted a few to explain how that tool would work. So again, we have an action plan, you can kind of look through that, but each of the action items aligns with a piece of our, of our, of our charter. So if you go to the next page, it just kind of highlighted, these are kind of the key areas, master schedule development for a 90-10, and there's a date for each of these items when they need to be completed, adjusting instructional minutes, professional development, and then right here, school review of student benchmark. And within these action, within these action items, there are things like, set a yearly schedule for when the teachers will be assessing the students, so that they have at the beginning of the year, scheduled out when these different assessments will happen, instead of coming up like a week before the grading period, "Oh, what do we do to assess them in this area?" So it's really the way, a way to support our teachers, and to support our, our administrator in making sure that we have a high-quality two-way immersion program. So I think that's it, in terms of presentation, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Fleming. We have one public comment, I'd like to, do we have one public comment?
We do.
Let's have the one public comment.
Kate Smith?
Kate Smith?
President Heron, members of the Santa Barbara Board of Education. I am in no way affiliated with Cesar Chavez. But I am a California State Secondary Credentialed French Teacher. And that's because in 1960, that's 50 years ago, I was enrolled at UCLA with Madame Yvonne Leonard. She was researching how children learn a second language. She wrote Parole et Pensez. It was the textbook for all languages in the educational system in the United States. So I am telling you, I am an educator. And Cesar Chavez is the school of our dreams. It is child-centered, teacher-directed, and parent-involved. That's the new school paradigm. There are no administrators or public monies that go to administration. We, the people, are rising today. We love our children. You don't. We'll work with our schools and we'll all be okay. Leave your keys on your desks 'cause you won't see se puede. And yes, we can expose corruption. We must get you out of our schools 'cause you lie, cheat, and steal. You betray our children and trust. This song was sung for 50 years in Ireland. And it was sung for nine months on the Great Peace March for global nuclear disarmament. A walk across the United States, I was the princess. Here are the original words that I sang in front of Roosevelt School in 1997 when I was attacked by the Santa Barbara school districts. You can't forbid me everything. You can't forbid me to think. You can't forbid my tears to flow. And you can't stop the song that I sing. There is school and government corruption. There is an education-political-industrial complex.
Thirty seconds.
There is an unholy alliance between the schools and the Department of Justice. It's called the school-to-prison pipeline. And it dams the low socioeconomic sector of our society. The movie Waiting for Superman, produced and directed by Davis Guggenheim, who produced and directed Inconvenient Truth, won the Sundance Film Festival Best Documentary. And you can Google that yesterday. San Francisco Chronicle.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Oh, thank you so much. Bye-bye.
That concludes public comment?
It concludes public comment. But one of the caveats that Dr. Sarves mentioned is that we're supposed to judge how the public feels about this and how the teachers feel about this. So in the audience, if you agree that this is a good thing to do, can I hear from you? Let the record show that almost every hand in the audience went up. And they're clapping. So I appreciate it very much. And I appreciate the fact that every one of you could get up here and talk, but that would take time from our discussions. This is a very important issue. So I know, and Mrs. Cudelo knows, that many of you in the first two, three rows have spent almost every waking hour on this topic to produce the charter that we have. And we thank you very much. And you're very dedicated teachers. We appreciate that. Okay. I agree. Okay, to the board. Who would like to start? Mrs. Parker?
Thank you so much for your presentation and for the new charter, Adelante. I really appreciate all the work that has been done on it. And I want to acknowledge that in terms of our board discussion, we're sort of, we're at a place where we haven't gotten our staff review on this yet. And so I'll certainly bring up some of the things that I noticed. But I know that I may be scratching the surface or going off on, in areas that I will go in a different direction once I see the staff review on it. So this is very preliminary for me. But I'd like to just run through, and I have certainly a few questions for Adelante and then just some things that I'll share with my fellow board members. So running through, and I will try to keep it, anything that I see as sort of like a, just a minor change, I will not bring up at this point. And I'll just address that with staff later. The first point that I wanted to talk about was on page five of 78, where it talks about the enrollment. The school will increase enrollment each year, beginning with a population of approximately 240 students up to a maximum of 300. I don't see that as being an issue in having it in the charter petition. But I want to be really clear that I believe that when we develop a facilities MOU, we need to follow the Prop 39 regulations, which is that we provide facilities for our in-district students. And it's for enrolled in-district students, not for projections in the distant future for in-district students. So I think that if we were looking at current enrollment, that would probably mean facilities for about 200 students for 10-11. And so when we develop facilities MOU, we need to be talking about that. I appreciated that a lot of the research points that you brought up. And I could kind of hear a little bit of Dr. Noel's concerns with that because while we're talking a lot about the research and what best practice models show, the experience here in this district with this particular school is that the model has struggled. And so I really like the new direction that you're heading in with this. One quick question that I had was on page 17 of 78. You say that you are going to utilize Houghton Mifflin for English and Spanish following the Language Arts Studies Standards, California English Language Arts Standards. And that is the latest adopted series for K6? Is it, can you tell me which series it is for Houghton Mifflin? And how did you choose that? And also really quickly, and I don't know if there's, if Ms. Chitay can answer this question. Do charters get SP 472 funding for training? Ms. Dow can answer that one. Can anybody tell me why Houghton Mifflin? Okay. Yes, I do.
Part of the work that Pat Morales did when she was there with the teachers is did kind of a little bit of inventory with the teachers. And so she definitely recommended the Houghton.
Houghton.
Houghton, thank you. The German is not my strength. They recommended that. And we also have in our current budget approximately $30,000 to be spent by the end of this year right now. And so part of that will be adoption of materials once we're approved here.
Okay. Ms. Waskey, did you want to?
I might add just a little bit. That was the adoption that the charter school already had some materials of. And it was when the last adoption went through, and I don't know if it was 2004 or...
That was 2000, 2000, 2002?
Two, right.
And then the latest one, which is I think it's Excursions for Houghton Mifflin, K6, that's 2007. I'm assuming that's...
Right, and that's not what they're adopting. They had the older version, I'm pretty sure, yes. And at that time, that was the best Spanish-English selection, adoption that you could have. They had incomplete sets. And in talking with Pat Morales, I explained a lot about the national standards and all the changes that are going forward. We're really pleased that we didn't go ahead, even though we adopted, we haven't purchased anything new. We're waiting to see how that plays out. And that was the suggestion that the charter school would follow with getting enough materials. They have the money to, so they have a complete program in place going forward with that program. That's not a bad program. And using it like we're doing with open court until we know more about the new adoption.
The core standards. Okay, that actually makes a lot of sense. So you'll be filling in pieces of what you already have. Okay, good. Then on page 25 of 78, there's the Plan for Special Education. This charter operates as a public school of the district for purposes of special education services and special education funding in accordance with Ed Code Section 4761B. So it says that we agree upon the manner in which funding and services are provided. And maybe Ms. Chitay can answer this one. Do we then charge back to the charter for services, for special ed services? And if we do that, does it cover the cost for special ed services?
I've just done an analysis on the costs of special education to the charter schools. And how we handle the charter school special education is we provide all the services. We pay for all the teachers and everything. We get all the money also, except for we do not get their revenue limit transfer. We have to transfer money over for all the special education out of our revenue limit calculation. We don't get that money. We pay for all the teachers' salaries. And then what we do is we take a portion of the encroachment and divide it by the total ADA of the schools, the, our school district and all the charters, and times it by that dollar amount. Then we times that dollar amount by the ADA of the charter schools. So for an example, we probably get about 50% of what we spend in special ed reimbursed by the charters.
Wow. Are we, are we required to have that kind of formula? Or can we change the formula so that it?
That would be an MOU situation. We could develop any kind of MOU.
I'll let Dr. Noel chime in on this if he wants to speak about this specifically.
Is it not true that this school can also join a CELPA directly? Because it is a district. And that in fact, there is a, I think they call it the CHELPA for charter schools, right? Up in El Dorado County that serves the charter schools all over the state. And there's one in Redondo Beach that has a number of charter schools. So there is an option that you go totally independent and release any connection whatsoever with the district, including any liability or deficit.
Back to you, Mrs. Parker.
So I guess we need to talk about whether that's the best thing for the, to protect the district in that case, if we are losing 50 cents on the dollar in this situation. Moving forward to page 46 of 78, there is a reference to the Padres Adelante. And then in parentheses, ELAC, the English Language Advisory Committee. And, you know, ELACs are, have very specific roles under Ed Code. And I think charters are required to have ELACs. They're not required to have ELACs? That's my, because that was my big question. Because I couldn't see anything that exempted charters in Ed Code. But it's not, what you're describing here is not an ELAC. And so that raised questions for me about whether or not you had to have an ELAC. All these sections on dispute resolution and personnel, I don't even want to comment on without having staff review. The section on page 55 of 78 on charter renewal, that is not something that we have in place for our other charter schools. And I would simply suggest that we completely delete that section. I don't see that it's helpful. And on page 72 of 78, there is the district, there's a paragraph talking about facilities, where it says pursuant to Proposition 39, "The district shall provide facilities that are contiguous and reasonably equivalent to those in which the students would be accommodated."
Seventy-two.
Those in which the in-district students would be accommodated if they were attending other public schools in the district.
Can you review that one more time?
Pursuant to Proposition 39, "The district shall provide facilities that are contiguous and reasonably equivalent to those in which the in-district students would be accommodated if they were attending other public schools in the district." And then, key to me, there are two areas that are really not negotiable for me in terms of voting it up or down. One is the removal of that charter renewal section. And the other is the terms of the charter. And the terms of the charter, page 77 of 78, the request is for a five-year charter. Given the history of the school that Adelante is succeeding from, I don't feel that it would be in the best interest of the students to approve anything passed June 30th, 2013. I also wouldn't approve anything shorter than that because I think that the school needs some time to find its feet. But I think that's a reasonable amount of time to see if it's going to get there. And then we can take a renewal from there. You have the transformational model listed at the back. The state requirements and the ACS Action Plan. I've got a lot of questions about, that none of us know the answers to, about how the CDE is going to move forward with schools in your particular kind of situation. There is funding. There's a grant deadline coming up for those schools that are in the lowest performing, persistently lowest performing class. And it's in a weird place because Cesar Chavez is closing down. This is a new school coming up. I don't even know if he qualifies to ask for that grant. And so therefore, you know, if you don't get that grant, I don't see how you have funding for things like an incentive program. And so it's kind of a catch-22 there. And I just hope that we get as much information as quickly as we can from the CDE. I'm left personally with a couple of questions. I know that there'll be many more questions once we get the staff review. And that is, the main one is when will we actually take action to close the school? Because, and I don't know if you plan, if the plan is for us to take action to close the school at the same time that we take action on approving a new charter petition? But I don't, I haven't heard any backwards mapping of the closure process. And so I don't know where that leaves us.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes, I'll answer that question. Well, we'll just, we're just closing the charter in accordance with our closure proceedings in our charter. So there really isn't any role for the district in that. We're just closing out in accordance with the charter. So that's the answer to that question.
But we need to take action. So I don't know if it, if you have a plan for when we're going to take that action.
Ms. Cudelo?
It was, I was under the impression that since there had not been a renewal of the charter and since the charter has officially lapsed, that we, that the board didn't necessarily need to take action to actually close it.
Maybe Mr. Price can address that. But what I read in the CDE website was that you can't just drift into closure, that you must take action.
That we must take action.
Rather than have a fast answer on that, Mr. Price, I think you can research that and let us know. Because we can't do anything about it tonight. And that's, it's going to close. Just no matter how we do it, we'll come up and do it the right way.
I believe the board left that open in the resolution that we did pass, though.
But there are, there are very specific things that have to be done.
Before the, I'm sorry. Before the closing of the public hearing, I'll answer that question. And I might have a couple of additional comments that might be helpful to send back to the petitioner.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Did you want a response from Mr. Gonzalez on ELAC? Oh, you're not prepared?
No, he's not prepared.
Oh, okay.
Who wants to be next? Dr. Noel?
Thank you very much for your presentation. And it's nice to see you here. You know, it was a narrow vote getting you here. I have some, I have a lot of little things and I have some big things. I'll start with the big ones. And I had marked mine to start at the back. And that's on page 55, the charter renewal. I felt that this was an effort to rewrite the Ed Code. And I agree with Mrs. Parker's judgment that this is unacceptable and should be deleted in its entirety.
Let's not try to have any collective agreement if we can avoid...
I disagree with one colleague.
Okay.
Now, no one else can agree with either of us.
Okay, got it.
Now, yeah, we're...
We can do it in public.
We can, okay.
Clarification, it's in public. We can have some collective agreement here. In fact, I'm hoping for a lot of it. And the petitioners are hoping for a lot of it as well.
I need some water. It's awful hot up here.
Another, another... I've read a lot of this kind of stuff in 12 years on the board. And I've read... And I've read educators saying all the wonderful things they're going to do and citing all the research that supports their position. And identified texts that sometimes uses the verb "we are" when it might be "we will be," which seems to suggest that it's a cut-and-paste job. And in general, I mean, it's just really easy to describe a perfect school. Okay? But history is not on your side. You ran a school and it was not perfect. And what I miss in this is a straightforward, upfront statement of what you did wrong and how you're going to correct it. Because it cries out when you're coming in with a new name, you know, and a new charter for a school that's been going and that has had the problems that you've had. That you understand what went wrong and that you can make the connections between specific diagnoses of what went wrong and what you're proposing new. I didn't see that in here. And I would like that. And I would think that that would be incumbent upon you, that any reader at the state level, if they're reading critically, is going to want that same information. Otherwise, it's just like, you're saying all these things that are going to happen and the reader knows, yes, but they didn't the last time you tried. And I don't say, I hope this doesn't sound too critical. I'm offering this as a perspective that I believe you're going to encounter and you certainly are in me encountering it. I want to know what you're going to do that's different. So it's a connection. Here's the diagnosis, here are the problems we had. And here's what we think went wrong. And here's precisely what we're going to do about those things in the future.
Just a quick response. When we came before the board and our last visit, we actually did a side-by-side comparison of the old charter and the new charter and a rationale as to why, which we felt like was sort of our analysis of what went wrong. We would be happy to provide that to you in a more kind of narrative form. The idea of leaving it out of the charter is that we are really doing a new school. I mean, there's not very much recognizable in the new charter and we are, everybody has to go through an application process, all of the staff, 100%. All of the students will go through a new, you know, they will, hopefully it won't be disturbing for the families that are there. But in all, we're doing a new code, ed code number. So essentially, we have seen what Cesar Chavez has done. And there have been some really amazing things that have been done culturally. And so we're going to protect that. But it wasn't really, we felt that for the energy of where we were going, it was really worth our effort to make sure we learn from our lessons by building in protection from what happened. So it may not be apparent, but everything that is in this document is meant to be a protection to prevent, including this benchmark tool. We haven't seen any charters in any of the charters that we've looked across the state that include a self-evaluation piece with benchmarks, with the protocol and how to use it. So I understand your concern and we would be happy to provide that to you. But in terms of embedding it in the charter, our intention is not to show how we're flipping a school. Our intention is to show that there was a school in the community that didn't realize the potential of a two-way immersion. And so a group of parents and educators got together who are passionate about two-way immersion and wanted to do the right thing, which was to essentially write a new charter and a new school. So I understand your concern and we'd be happy to provide a narrative for you based on all the lessons learned. But putting it in the charter felt a little bit, not maybe as much of a good use of the time and energy that we had.
I understand, I understand that. And it sounds like, and normally, of course, it wouldn't be an occasion for it. But this is very unique. And this, for me, a couple of pages even in the foreword, I mean, somewhere up front that says, you know, here's who we are, here's who we were, and we think we're, and here are the major areas that we had problems, we think that this charter addresses those. If you want to get there in a very specific, you could even reference it. But just something that's very upfront to people. Because they're going to know. You're known up there. So they're going to want to, okay, that, thank you.
I did provide Dr. Sarfis with my copy of that comparison.
Is that this? I just got a copy of this, yeah. And this is a step in the right direction, but to me, it's too bloody tabular.
Okay.
You know, and, no, I mean, I understand-
We all think differently.
I understand how you use this to organize thinking. But ultimately, I'm talking about writing some texts that makes it sound like real people talking about their school.
Okay.
Anyway, I don't want to beat that drum.
And I did notice that you, in your document, you said there's been more changes since that. So if you could update that and an executive summary of some type, too, would be appropriate, like Dr. Noel.
Dr. Noel, may I suggest that that might be drawn into the document at the end on implications of lowest achieving schools designation? Because I believe that not only our board, but the CDE may want to see that as well. And they've done a lot of this work already if they put it in narrative form. I think that'd be a very appropriate place for it.
Narrative form, but not educate, not edu-babble. Okay?
We'll give someone who speaks your language to do it.
Really clear, honest discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Noel.
And can I make one more comment? Sorry.
Yes.
And I do want to publicly acknowledge that we have some families who've had children who were really successful, Cesar Chavez, and went on to be really successful. So it's been a very sensitive issue for us to say to families who attended, this school failed when they have children who've gone on to do some amazing things at private schools. So while I, again, I do understand that, we also have a lot of respect for the people who have been successful. And so it was very challenging to embed into this very public document, you know, all of these failures when there were some families and children who were very well-served. So I just want to add that emotional bit to it.
Okay.
No problem. When one is attacked, one needs to defend.
Dr. Noel.
All right, another point. And this is just, I already said this in other words, but I have in my notes here, the research versus the reality. And we write these things and we cite all the research. But again, then there's the reality. And this is the same point put differently. You know, the research says it works, research says some 50, like you said earlier, some 50/50 schools really work. This one didn't. Why? Okay, okay, let me go. Next point. You have in there, and maybe I missed this, but I see the provisions for a review for you call it an audit. I don't see that as an independent one. I think you were using language like collaboration with an outside reviewer. But I think that it needs to be a contract. And you probably know more than I, but the last time I looked at this, there was some Cambridge associates, not meaning the city, that was in that business of doing third-party reviews. And I believe, I believe the CDE had it, on some of the SBE charters, they were direct charters, I believe that that was part of the arrangement they had. So that, because the CDE was not in a position to be overseer like a district. So they used these and they really, the best part, of course, is they strengthened the school because you get this stuff in advance and you can relate to it. But then when they, when they're done and they present a decent report, you've got this autonomous thing. It's not, you know, it's dispassionate, it's not self-interested, it says, here's what they're doing. So I vote for an independent, really independent review.
We did use a language mutually agreed upon reviewer between the school district and the board of directors of the Adelante School. You just want to make sure it said independent so that it's clear that it's not like a local kind of situation.
To me, that needs to be really clear. For me, it has, you know, it has to be somebody who doesn't work for any of us.
Do you know what page that is, Dr. Noel?
What?
Do you know what page that is?
Oh, boy.
Okay, okay, that's-
I'm not going through page by, I'm just-
I don't know that. Go ahead, Dr. Noel.
Okay. I'm concerned about the viability of the finances in the short term. And those questions earlier basically are the questions I have. How, to what extent, if you don't get any of that money, can you open and sustain that school through? Because the worst thing in the world would be to open and then go broke. And I've heard some horror stories about that. So, but you do have the advantage that you already have a clientele. You're not starting from scratch. And Nancy, I always heard, I always heard it takes about 350 students to get to the break-even point.
Use the microphone, please.
Actually, Meg, Jatae and I talked about this yesterday. We have two advantages if we don't get the public charter school grant, is that the Cesar Chavez Charter School upon closure can donate its fund balance, which is about 200, between $200,000 and $25,000 to the new charter school. So that will sustain us if it's that we needed it. Hopefully, we won't need it.
And this, I didn't, I must say, I did not-
It was in the narrative part of-
Study your financial document. That's all in your document, Dan?
It was in the narrative part of the budget.
Okay.
I'm not sure if that, I think it was included in the charter. And also, we can apply for the revolving loan.
Right.
Which is a 250, up to $250,000 if needed.
Right.
And if we don't get it this year, we could apply for it next year also.
Yeah.
So that would help with the cash flow.
And can you, can you get a line of credit?
That would be the revolving loan from the state.
No, I mean from a local-
No.
Camp.
Well, I think there are banks that are lending money to charter schools, but it's, I don't know if it's a direction we really want to go into.
Try, you know EdTech?
Yeah.
Do you know anybody down there?
No, but I've-
Okay, come on, let's go.
Seen their website.
I'm offering a point where a place is in the business of helping finance charter schools.
As Meg and I discussed, there is problematic issues if we don't get the charter block grant. But we're prepared to deal with those. And probably what it's going to do is put Adelante where all the other charter schools and the school district is right now, as far as the budget cuts, is it will have to just make more cuts, which everybody's having to do anyway.
Okay, Dr. Noel, further?
Yes, yes, yes. Thought we had 90 minutes.
Actually, the clock stopped at 6:20, so we have a lot of time.
I was, let me move to, I will, I will skip over some of these things. I want to move to the measurable outcomes section. And I found that problematic. If I can find it again, I will, oh, there they are, outcomes. You have, starting on page 30, measurable student outcomes. And these are, that's a required element in a charter, as we all know. And you have, and the language here is troublesome to me, in the sense that it's indeterminate. Students will demonstrate success in mastering standards-based curriculum. That's an easy one, but you don't say as measured by. Okay? Or indicators of. Student tests will be developed. That's problematic because you don't say by whom. And amateur test development is not good enough nowadays. Okay? Pupils will demonstrate competency in math, et cetera, et cetera. That's easy enough to say as indicated by. But it gets more difficult. Students, pupils will, and every time I see the word pupils, I don't think anybody real wrote it. I think it was somebody in Sacramento who wrote it. Okay? Pupils will demonstrate an understanding of themselves. That's, now, you put it in as a measurable outcome. I don't see any clue as to how you're going to measure that. I'm going to go down my list. Don't, okay. Pupils will express themselves and understand others. These are all outcomes. Express oneself and understand others. I'm a quantitative empiricist type and I immediately say, where are the indicators? Pupils will, wait a minute, a whole bunch of them on the next page. Socioemotional benchmarks. So there, I guess you've got some testing. But socioemotional is hardly free of problems when it comes down to making assessments. Self-guided skills. I can picture, I could picture some indicators, something objective to do that, but you don't mention it. Problem-solving, critical thinking, same comments. Cross-cultural understanding, same thing. Not a clue for most of those, and I did go back and look through your benchmarks and so on. Not a clue as to how, this is wonderful stuff. It's very human. But of course, the softer and the more human it gets, the more difficult it is to develop objective indicators that are reliable and valid. Okay. Enough said about that. The audit thing, Mr. Herron's on page 34, that point I made earlier. On school-wide data analysis on page 34, my note is, how do you develop the capacity to do that? Because that requires some methodological sophistication and time. And, you know, at the district level, we have a department that does that. And at the school level, you can't afford the department, but you've got to figure out how you're going to do it. It's easy to say, but you've got to have the resource and the personnel to do it. School governance, page 38. Page 37. I look at the board composition and you don't say how large it's going to be, you say what its minimum size is going to be. And its minimum size is three, six? Seven?
It says seven to 11. Board composition, seven to 11 members.
Okay. Okay. I looked at your demographics. And you've got 74% free lunch, you've got 85% Hispanic, 12% the white subgroup, 68% English language learners. This is all in Data Quest as of now. You've got 37% not high school graduate, 24% high school graduate, 5% college graduate, interestingly, and 11% grad school. How do you get to grad school without graduating from college? I don't know, but maybe I'm misinterpreting. I believe that your board should reflect your demographics. And I believe it's been part of your problem. Okay? I have little notes in here that say, this sounds a little bit elitist. And don't, yeah, I say it right here, under board composition. And I'm particularly, I find particularly disturbing, preference will be given to bilingual candidates. Now, I think I know where that's coming from. But that would preclude unilingual Spanish speakers. And if you've got 68% English learners, you've got a lot of parents who speak Spanish and may not speak English well, and you're not putting them on your board. You're in fact giving preference to those who do speak English, bilingual. I think that's wrong. Thank you very much for listening. Thank you, Mr. Herron, for your patience.
Thank you, Dr. Noel. Mrs. Deacon, I guess we'll just go down the line.
I would also like to thank the group that worked so hard on this. And I completely believe you are fully committed to rigor. I don't have any question about that, having read this document. I want to highlight a few things, multiple things that I like a lot, and then I want to ask a few questions and maybe raise a few concerns. I'm fully in favor of extending the school year wherever we can. And you have an interesting proposition for adding two weeks into your school year, which I thought was really interesting and innovative. And I'm happy that you're able to do that as a charter. I, as I mentioned earlier, I had expressed previous concerns about the 90-10 model, but I think those have been allayed. So I'm fine with that, especially because it sounds like your teachers are all willing to do that. And that was one of my primary concerns. I like the heterogeneous groupings. I think that's really key and critical. And that was an important change. I understand there were some issues raised about the ELAC group. And I don't know if we ever got the definitive answer on that. Is it true that you, charters do not need an ELAC group? Okay. Well, regardless, I really like the 16-week intensive parent workshops that you're doing. I wish we could do those. We do a lot of them at other schools, but I think that they sound really good. And I think that's really critical. Because in Pat Morales's report, she said that there were a lot of parents that weren't participating. And that is, that was different, I think, from the impression we got when we were initially approached by Cesar Chavez's families. And so that's really important. The, I like the outreach to families. I think that's really key in recruiting students because I am a big believer in the need for some- because I, I am a big believer in the need for some, some balances, as is shown in the literature, about the percentage of, of students who come from a variety of native home languages, because I'm not sure that dual immersion really works, and, you know, unless you have the right balance, and so I'm happy that you are going to do outreach, and I just want to really impress on you how important I think that is for me. Now, turning to our pages, on page twenty-five, actually, this is a question for Mr. Hetjank. The, the district will be responsible for ensuring all facilities are in accordance with ADA. I'm assuming that Cesar Chavez, the campus already meets all the ADA requirements, is that right? Okay, so there's no need to do any additional work to bring this up?
Let the record show that, that Mr. Hetjank shook his head, yes.
Okay. On page twenty, oh, page thirty-five, sorry, thirty-five. This actually brings me to one of Mrs. Parker's concerns, but I'm going to insert it here. I, I also am in favor of a three-year charter. I, I do think that, that that should give you enough time to demonstrate a lot of, of progress, and I am hesitant to go the full five years. And one of the, because one of the items here, under adequate yearly progress, in the second paragraph, you've called out the second year, after the second year of implementation, going to the, the collaboration and the mutually agreed-upon consultant. I think that needs to happen in the first year. And if it's a three-year charter, I think it needs to happen right away. So I would say at the end of the second, and if at the end of the second year, I'm sorry, I'm in page thirty-five.
Oh, I see.
Bullet point, adequate yearly progress, second paragraph, if Adelante Charter School has not met AYP after the, it says second year, I think, if we, and I don't know where the board will end on this, but if we were to end with a three-year charter, I think that needs to be after the first year of implementation, and, and also triggers probably after the second year if there was a failure to meet AYP. Dispute resolution, maybe we will get this in our staff report back to us, but some of this language seemed a little vague to me, and I don't, maybe it's boilerplate legal language. Mr. Price is shaking his head, no. So I would want to see more, more specifics and less vague language, I think.
And at, at the end, maybe I had a, just a couple of minutes, and that was one of the items that I wanted to include.
Okay, thank you. Page fifty-five, I guess that just takes us to the, oh, the charter renewal. I, I also am not real comfortable with this, I, I guess in many ways because of what happened when we were struggling to find common ground previously, and I'm not sure if this was in place, that under these criteria, if we would have even been able to find resolution then. So I'm not sure putting this in now would ensure resolution in, in, in the event that we were to end up where we were before, which I really hope we won't be, and I don't think we will be. I would just make one other final comment, is I do feel strongly that grades two through six should, should be the grouping that we look at as achievement benchmarks, and that, that I think the school-wide API growth targets and the AYP percent proficient are really, really important to make, and knowing that safe harbor is, is a very realistic option, and I, actually, when I spoke to Mr. Hayden earlier today, you know, he was reminding me about regression to the mean, and how in fact, given how low the scores are now, there's nowhere to go but up, and so I, I think that it won't be that hard to make, I hope it won't be that hard to make your API and AYP. So I'm, I'm hopeful that that will happen, and I would like to set that as a, as a criteria. So staff review will be very important to me. I think there obviously are things that I haven't thought of or don't understand well enough to, to, to make recommendations about, but again, I would just like to thank the group for all the effort you put into this.
Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I want to start with a question, and I'm not sure to whom I need to direct this question, but I need clarification. Is the charter document expected to be as detailed and specific as the MOU? And the reason I'm asking the question is because I'm struggling with some of the issues that are being raised, with whether I think those legitimately belong in the charter document, or whether they ought to be in the MOU.
Well, the MOU describes the relationship with the district in a number of areas, facilities, for example, perhaps special education. So there would be more specificity in the MOU, but earlier, the board had indicated desire to see sort of the, the whole picture, and we had advised the petitioners that they should put enough specificity in the charter document that it would point toward what would be in the MOU, and it wouldn't be a big surprise to find that, oh, well, we're, we're not in agreement at all on some issues in the MOU, that, that we understand what they're looking for in the MOU.
For example, I'm wondering, as we talked about the, the special ed costs, and how we get reimbursed for them, and how that might be different. With the current Cesar Chavez charter, was that, I, I, I don't remember, was that identified in the charter? Was that part of our MOU? Or is it in neither place, and it's just, it just evolved as practice?
It, it was not part of the MOU, as I recall, any, any cost or beyond the standard reimbursement for.
Thank you. That's an example, Mrs. Cordero, of the type of issue that you want to deal with and resolve upfront.
Yes.
In conjunction with the action that you're going to take on the charter. And it's my strong recommendation that other issues that are potentially controversial also be covered upfront. That hasn't always been the practice with the district in the past, but the situation is that the board has ultimate decision-making authority upfront, and if things are put to the side and not dealt with until you, after the charter is approved, then, and I'm, you know, talking as a lawyer, but you want to hear this, then the leverage that you have to incorporate certain provisions that you may want, using your example, having to do with special education encroachment, is essentially lost, because if you don't reach agreement, then you go through some process, and you don't have the same ability by a long shot in order to ensure that you're getting what you want. And there are a number of those provisions, and I want to briefly cover what I think they are before you close the hearing tonight.
So I guess my next question would then be, should we be considering the MOU at the same time that we are considering the charter?
Mrs. Fleming?
I did just want to point out that in our previous documentation that we sent for the last meeting, we sent a version of the MOU for special ed and facilities that was worked through with the Santa Barbara District staff and Eva Nyer, and so that was back in the summertime. And so I did want to say that we're definitely willing to, you know, we're not really here to like try to drive a hard bargain, we really just want to start our school, and we're really excited about those pieces in terms of, you know, working together on the MOU. We hope that we've demonstrated collaborative spirit and, and willingness to work with the board, and, and I know you, we can't say like, trust us, or, or whatever, but I, but I do think that we have presented information and have responded in kind, and intend to continue to keep a collaborative relationship with the district. So in response, we did send two draft documents that I thought, you know, I wasn't in on those conversations, but I know that some of that was agreement, at least it was my understanding on those two issues, so I just wanted to point that out.
Let me just say, in the staff report, we will give you recommendations on language that we think does need to be included here.
Okay, thank you. Then I wanted to actually start the substance of my comments by complimenting, and I know others have done so too, but having attended many of your meetings now and, and having worked with you, I know the extent to, well, maybe I don't even know, the extent of time that you put into making these changes. And as one of the people who helped establish the original charter for Cesar Chavez, I personally think that there is a great deal more specificity in this charter than there certainly was in our original charter. As I, I know that you have really taken a lot of our comments to heart, you've really addressed them, I was happy to see some of the issues addressed that we had ra, that we had raised at our previous board meeting, and so I really want to appreciate and acknowledge the level of work and the level, the, the spirit in which it was done. The spirit not only of wanting the best for the students, but also of being willing to sort of embrace the issues that were raised by the district and the board. I really appreciate that, and I think it makes this process much easier, and I know that it didn't start out as an easy process for all of you, so the fact that we got this far, I think is really a testament to how serious you are about wanting to promote this type of education for your students, and how committed you are to serving the students. So with that said, I also wanted to point out, because I'm, again, struggling with how to figure this out, that the, the ed code says, "The governing board of the school district shall not deny a petition for establishment of a charter school unless it makes written factual findings specific to the particular petition setting forth specific facts to support one or more of the following findings." And the findings are, the school, the charter school presents an unsound educational program. The petitioners are demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program set forth in the petition. The petition does not contain the number of signatures required. The petition does not contain an affirmative of each of the conditions described, and I guess that's where we might have, have a question. And then five, the petition does not contain reasonably comprehensive descriptions of all of the following. So I, I feel like there are some issues that, that we are discussing or being raised, and I'm not sure really fall into the category of the grounds on which we can deny a charter. So I'm a little concerned because certainly, my experience at the state, having, having spoken before the state board, was that the state board really didn't attempt to, I don't want, I don't want to use a, a negative word, but revise or modify the charter to meet its interests or its desires, but rather took the charter that was presented and tried to determine whether in fact it met those requirements. So I kind of feel like maybe we need to keep that in mind a little bit. Then on to the comments that, that I had, and the difficulty of going late in this process is that most of them have already been said, but I did want to focus a little bit on, one question that I had for Ms., I think it's for Mr. Price, is in the section, in the section on student discipline, it mentioned the issue of expulsion, which is uncommon at an elementary level, but has the potential to occur. If a student is expelled from Adelante, would that student be eligible to attend a district elementary school? Because technically, they're not being expelled from our district, although as the chartering agency, I don't know. If a student were to be expelled from, from Adelante, because the other part of it is that we are required to accept students who, who reside within our district, so would we then be required to accept that student into one of our schools?
Any responsibility that you might have would be limited to students that were attending Adelante who were in-district students.
Yes.
Obviously, there are going to be a number that are outside. In terms of the responsibility to take a expelled student, in-district student, and place them in a different Santa Barbara elementary school, I don't know the answer to the question. I'll get that information to you.
Okay. Thank you.
May I, may I address your previous issue, which is if we're presented with a charter petition, then without any changes, we can vote it up or down. I believe that the board resolution that obligated us as a district and as a board to work with the petitioners to get the petition to the point where it could be voted up, really set us on a different sort of a course that, than we would normally have if we were hit cold with a charter petition.
I, I agree, but I'm not, but that's not the issue that I'm addressing. I think it's appropriate, and in fact, laudable, that the, the charter petitioners were willing to work with the district, and that the district was willing to work with the charter petitioners to, you know, try to make this go as smoothly as possible. But I think having done that, I don't feel that it's, should be the district's position that the charter should, in pretty much every way, shape, and form, conform to what we would like, at the expense perhaps, although maybe not, hopefully not, of what the petitioners are trying to achieve with their charter. So I think we had, we did that first part, and, and in fact, we're still doing it, but I think at some point, we still need to recognize that there's a reason why this is not a district school, because there's a very particular perspective and philosophy that is being presented from a charter. I certainly feel like in the past, when charters have been approved, that there, you know, that, that recognition did exist, that this is another, this is an alternative to what we currently have. So by definition, it's going to be different.
And I agree. In fact, the process we're undertaking right now is really one of board members identifying what, what are those critical areas that would allow them to, to approve this, and what are those things that are deal breakers? From our point of view, if we find something, for example, if we find that the lottery process is illegal, we'll point that out. Now, I suppose you could approve a charter with an illegal lottery process, but you probably wouldn't want to.
Right, and that goes back to, I think that goes back to the, the issues that I read at the beginning of what are the grounds on which we should deny a charter, and so, you know, that's kind of what I would like to look at. But I also did want to comment on a couple of other issues that were raised.
Can I just comment on that, Mrs. Cordero?
Yeah.
Can I comment?
Sure.
You know, you talk about what are deal breakers.
Yes.
But anything that's a deal breaker has to be a deal breaker because it can be justified by one, two, three, four, or five. You know, we just can't pick something, say it's a deal breaker, and not be able to identify why it's a deal breaker.
And one, two, three, four, or five cover a lot of ground, yes.
But we'd still have to put in writing why it's a deal breaker.
Yes.
And get three votes for that.
Mr. Herron?
Yes, Dr. Noel. If Mrs. Cordero, let Dr. Noel.
This is just a footnote on Dr. Chavez's statement, and, and a clarification. The ed code is just the beginning word on what we, what charters have to do, and, and on the criteria for evaluating them, and Mr. Price will tell you. You have to read extensively in the California Code of Regulations where all of the meaning of those things is spelled out.
Okay, thank you.
And, and where the burden on both the petitioner and, and on the board is, is pretty clear when you look in fine detail.
Thank you. Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I agree with that, and I just echo Mr. Herron's sentiments, that there are, they are numerous, and they are expansive, but we should be able to identify them and not just say, because I don't like this, it's a deal breaker. So regarding the issue of the independent audit, I just wanted, and Dr. Noel, I don't know if you had seen this, or if this doesn't address the issue that you were raising, but you talked about wanting to make sure that it was an independent audit, and on page seventy-one, the very first sentence says, "An annual independent financial audit of the books and records of ACS will be conducted." The. The next paragraph says, "The board of directors shall select an independent auditor." Two paragraphs after that, it says, "An independent financial audit of ACS is a public record." So...
I was talking about educational audit, which is referred to on page 34.
Oh, the, okay, rather than the financial audit.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I just assumed auditors tend to be independent.
Okay. And so then on page, on page 30, that was, I guess, where that issue arose.
yearly collaboration and audits with educational experts on page 34.
On page 34?
Middle bullet on that page, Mrs. Cudero.
Okay. So that is the one where we want to have an independent audit?
That's certainly my opinion.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to go back to some of those where, for example, students will demonstrate an understanding of themselves. Some of those were more specific, like, for example, that one, the full sentence is, "Students, pupils will demonstrate an understanding of themselves as scientists and of science as they process through their reflections in science journals and during discussions." So they were a little bit more precise.
Yeah, some are clearer than others.
Yeah. And then the issue around, that I think a number of people raised, sorry, the dispute resolution. I think if the petitioners could live with taking that out, I think that would make it a lot more palatable to a lot of us. And the issue of the ELAC, if that could be resolved.
Dispute resolution or renewal?
Oh, I'm sorry, the renewal. Yeah, the renewal, sorry. I think that would make it more palatable to a number of us. And I think most of my other concerns were covered by others. The issue of the special ed, I would kind of have to hear and see. And then some of the other issues Mr. Price has mentioned he's going to speak about, so I'll defer to his comments. So, yes.
I just wanted to respond to something that Dr. Noel said, because I know it's of importance to you as well. So I just wanted to highlight the reflective piece, you know, how to be more reflective of our population. And we are all very open about the fact that we regret that our governance is not reflective of our population. I would say there are several governing bodies out there that regret that they're not more reflective of the populations they serve. And so one of the things that we put into our action plan is to work to address that. And we have Just Communities listed as a resource, and we'd like to meet with them and see how they can help us in that area. And I wanted to point out, the reason why we had placed in their bilingual candidates to be given preference is so that all of the members would understand both languages that are, that speakers or public speakers or documents that would come through. But we also did put parent with Spanish dominance. And so I just wanted to explain the spirit of the bilingual candidate. We do have, of the previous board of Cesar Chavez, in the past year, we have had a majority of the members of the governing board, as of when we came to you for renewal, were native Spanish speakers at that time. And then since that time, we've kind of had some changes. But we do have, the previous board did have three members who were not Spanish, did not speak Spanish, and we found that that was a challenge. So that's why we put bilingual preference, not to eliminate someone who was Spanish dominant as much as I suppose to eliminate someone who was, who did not understand Spanish. So I want to explain the spirit of that, and we recognize that openly. I think a lot of governing bodies do, and we really just want to say that that is a huge priority for us moving forward. And that's why we haven't presented to you who that new board will be, because we want to do some very serious work to make sure that our, that our community is governed by a more reflective population. So I just wanted to highlight that. I know you're passionate about it, and I just wanted to respond to the comment. It is part of our action plan. You'll see that that's something that we're working on.
Right. And actually, I have to compliment your language, because the language says, "The board composition voting members will reflect the diversity of our school community." And that is, I believe, appropriately strong language to achieve that. And your point is well taken, because certainly our board doesn't reflect the diversity of the district that we serve. So we can't be throwing too many stones. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just a few questions on my part. We received this review checklist that the staff is going to be using in going through this document. I presume you have this, I think you want to email.
Yeah, we got it yesterday.
Yesterday, yeah. So you'll be looking at this. See anything that jumps out at you that you want to change? I presume you will. If you see something in here that you're not, that you're not going to be pleased with the answer, you'll be looking at it from that viewpoint.
We will be looking at it. And if I can make a recommendation, maybe next time, if somebody requests that kind of documentation, you can provide a little bit earlier. But thank you.
I have a feeling we just got it.
Okay, great.
I don't think we got it any faster than you did.
Yes. Oh, can we get, actually, we have someone who wants to respond.
Yeah, let me clarify. This is for the staff to use. This isn't for the petitioners to fill out.
So that the students don't know the grade, how they're being graded before they turn in their assignment?
My point is that if they see something, how they're going to be reviewed, they might want to be proactive rather than reactive, just in case.
Are you asking them to go ahead and fill out?
No, review it.
I'll introduce you.
If the teacher gives you a cheat sheet, use it.
Can I make a?
Yes.
I'd just like to introduce briefly our attorney, Jennifer McCoury, who's been amazing. And she has, was recommended to us through the Charter School Development Center. She's out of Sacramento and has done extensive work with charter schools. So we've been very thankful since Kate Parker recommended we get, we consult with our attorney. We got a new one, and we found the best one. So anyway, I'm going to have her respond.
Based on your comment, just on, you know, that checklist, I just looked at it about an hour ago. And I know that I saw a couple of things on there that I didn't necessarily agree were mandated by law. And so I'd like to just be able to give you the opportunity to know where we stand in terms of those positions.
I'll get you my email address.
Okay.
That's my, yeah, I'd rather known before than after. Couple of things that weren't touched on. I'll start with page 34, the bottom section. There's a sentence there that, I guess I don't understand. "This will include meeting the API targets two out of every three years to meet the renewal requirements as specified in the Education Code." Is this just a goal, because that's not the Education Code, I don't think. It's like meet it the last year, or two out of the last three years, or an aggregate of the past three years. This is very, very strong. Was that the intent? I mean, because the Education Code says, hey, this is one requirement, but there's three others or four others ways you can do it. And you're saying here that this is the one way you'll look at it.
Okay, the last one.
I just wonder if they want to make sure that...
That's the one way that seems to be really clear to everybody. There's not really any like, well, I don't really agree with that. This is like a yes or no, so we thought that would be the best goal, to stick with something that everybody could universally say, yes. I see that. That's true, so.
But two out of every three years, you know, if you do it the first two years, and you miss it the third year, then you've got to do it the fourth year, and then you have to do it the fifth year. I mean, the way that, if you chart it out, two out of every three years, put some parameters on it, you may want to look and see how you do that. But just look at it.
Yeah.
I disagree with my colleague. I thought it was great, as written.
But that's not the Education Code. You know, the Education Code doesn't say that's the only...
The Education Code sets a minimum. This is going beyond the minimum.
Yeah, but the Education Code says, hey, if you don't do this, you still have three other ways or four other ways.
Yeah, and it's a wimp.
But does this negate the other three or four ways? Are they saying this is the only way we will be judged?
No, this just says that that's, that it's the responsibility of the principal to make sure that that's happening.
But what if it doesn't?
That's part of the evaluation process. And I mean...
No, but as far as, this is not, talk about renewal requirement. You know, the other renewal requirement is one we argue about for two meetings or three meetings. Does this negate any other, any other way? Is this the only way you want to be judged?
It just says, "Include meeting the API targets to meet," that's the goal, right? ACS's top goal is to achieve the API growth target set by the state. However, we can change that if you think it's too stringent.
I love it. I like it too, but...
This isn't renewal. This is just data reporting.
Okay.
It's a data analysis goal.
That's what I want to know.
So if we feel like it negates it, then yes, we'll work with our attorney and see if it's...
I just wondered about that, okay. Page 35 is the one I think that bothered me. Let's see. No, it's not 35. Yeah, 55 I have circled, and I understand the reason for putting that in there. It's a pretty elongated way to try to resolve something. I would agree with the other four. I think we've got a commonality there, that that's not something we want to go into. But then 56 is where I am. "Under priorities in public random lottery," and I've had an email correspondence with you on this, "this seems to me that it does not give absolute preference to our district students." It says, hey, you'll get two shots, two chances, but the out of district will get one, and if luck of the lottery, that one gets chosen, one of our district people doesn't get chosen. So I would like to see item D on page 56 that spells out, in order of priority, our own district children.
I'll just respond to that briefly. And just as a point of clarification, the law does say that you have to give preference, but it to children in the county in which they reside, but it does not, preference isn't defined. And so the charter has the flexibility legally to provide then those certain steps that this charter in particular does. It gives preference to children that currently attend the school, to siblings of those, to faculty children.
Right.
And then it gives a preference to district students by giving them a lottery, double lottery.
Yeah, that's a preference I don't like.
Okay.
I want a preference, number one. I don't want a chance. I want, I want to pay for our education of our children before we pay for education or even have education for other children.
And just as a legal matter, that that's not a requirement of charter schools.
I'm not asking about a legal matter.
That's okay. Just wanted to make...
Yeah, I'm telling you what, I personally, I want to see our children there before out of district children.
Can I?
Mrs. Cudero?
This is a question for Mr. Price. Do I remember correctly that financial impact on the district is not a grounds for denying a charter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I will say it's the intent of the school to serve the students in the district. That is the intent of the school.
And I want the charter to reflect the intent. Personally, can't speak for anybody else. I think, I'm going to, and those are the ones I was looking at. And again, I also wait for the staff report for more detail. But again, I think on behalf of all of us, at this point anyway, the effort that you've gone through is tremendous. Yep, Dr. Price, you have some comments?
I'll just be brief, so you can move on. But in terms of some of the provisions, obviously, some of them are more substantive than others. For example, last November, you were grappling with the question of whether or not all the issues that you faced, having to do with the potential renewal, needed to be worked out through the dispute resolution section. And it doesn't, because renewals are not intended to be covered by dispute resolution, because renewal is what happens after the charter or after the contract is over. So it becomes very important that some of these provisions be worded very carefully. And in working with staff, back in the middle of March, we provided some recommended language for certain of the provisions that we thought were appropriate, not only for this charter, but for, to have it be a standard that the district would use in reviewing future charters, so that you don't have to go through the back and forth. Many school districts and county offices say, these are going to be the standard provisions that we expect. And obviously, those provisions have to be equitable, and they have to be reasonable. They're not supposed to be iron-fisted. But the example I just gave is one of them. Now, there were a couple of comments tonight about the audit and about needing to make sure that there was an independent auditor that was brought in. Actually, my hat's off to the charter, because we gave them the language that they almost entirely incorporated, and it does call for there to be an independent auditor that is brought forward.
You're talking financial audit or academic audit?
I'm talking about financial audit, exactly. So just to bring it into focus, we, from the staff standpoint, we'd like to see that the charter renewal provision that was originally proposed put back in, because it follows the law, and I don't think there's anything that would be viewed or should be viewed as problematic. You had a couple of comments from board members about how renewal would be judged, and whether or not the standards that had been proposed were appropriate. They're not appropriate for another reason, and that is because the law is fluid on this subject right now. There's a bill in Sacramento that seeks to specify how charter schools are going to be judged on renewal, that would change that existing language that you struggled with back in November. So the appropriate way to go for everybody, the charter and the board, is to follow the provisions of the law, whatever they may be at that time. The dispute resolution section, we'd like to see the language that we had suggested be put back in, simply because it's clear, it's shorter. In terms of the facilities language, there was discussion of comments in both page 72 and page 25. We'd like to see the facilities discussion occur in the separate memorandum of understanding. There's a facilities agreement that should be put in place every year, because under the law, Prop 39, a facility's request is made every year. And that depends upon the circumstances that exist in any given year. For example, if the number of, and this is not really applicable to this charter, but I think it's important for you to hear an example. If the number of in-district students drops to under 80, the district has no more responsibility for providing facilities. That's happened for one of the charters that you have. If you lock yourself into an agreement in a charter or in an MOU that covers the entire period of the charter, whatever it may be, three or five years, then you may have lost the flexibility that the law has intended for you to have in dealing with facility issues. So we'd like to see the facility language be changed so that the district and the charter can deal with it on an annual basis, as I think is intended. Mrs. Parker had a question about closure, and my handy dandy BlackBerry wouldn't allow me to get the Code of Regulations. That's why I should have an iPhone. I'm going to talk about that when I get home.
iPad.
Yeah, they're too big for me. But there are no provisions that are in the ed code itself that define the closure protocol. But I think you're right. What is it, 116, 19, something like that?
I just wanted to chime in that what I saw was in the, when the charter schools frequently ask questions in the CDE, where they said, "You have to take action to close a school." I'm sure it's in the CCR somewhere and not in ed code.
And I'm sure Jennifer, being the expert, probably knows exactly where to go. But we need to look at that so we can work with the charter to do the wrap-up that's going to occur at a certain point. So I'll get back to you on that. And that's really it. I guess the last comment is that many of the details that we're talking about are in the A-through-Q section that cover most of 47605, that require a reasonably comprehensive description. And what we're really looking at is adequacy, and again, looking, beginning now to implement some standard language that's reasonable and fair for both parties, that will hopefully save charter groups time in the future, having to wrangle over some of these things. And I know will save your board and your staff time. So thank you.
Do you actually have your new corporation?
Do you actually have your new corporation?
We submitted the article to the corporation last month, but the state's running behind, so we're looking at probably have to do some research. Unless that happens, we'll get to it.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Noel?
May I have about three minutes for afterthoughts? One is, is technical and I defer to people who are going to check this out, but if, if we're talking about not making the school an arm of the district for purposes of special education, that it be, that it will be a, if we're talking about it being a freestanding LEA, it has to be in a SELPA. I, I have a hunch that the state's going to want to see that you're in the SELPA before they give you a charter number, and I don't know about that, but I think, I, I, well, I do know in one case, you had to at least have, had got your application on file with a SELPA and gotten some kind of indication that they're willing to consider you.
Does the requirement for the charter school petition itself require that you identify are you going to go to a special program? And that would then be something that could be?
Mic for phone, please.
If, if the charter school decides to join its own SELPA, it would need to be reflected in the charter and obviously that would need to be changed before you prove it.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Okay. I, we talk about the criteria, you know, it's an unsound educational program, and another criteria is that they're not, that there must be reasonably comprehensive descriptions. I don't think that the descriptions of curriculum and instruction are reasonably comprehensive and enable one to make a judgment whether it is a sound educational program. And I, and I think it'd be a relatively easy thing for you because you, you have classes, you have curriculum, curriculum, to put in some samples of curriculum. I'm, I've, I've read charters that have a full, full curriculum for every grade level. I'm not saying you need to do that, but something that slices it out a little bit so you, people can get an idea. Another thing I know is very common in, in charters is an example, a day in the life of the student. What's it going to look like and feel like to, for a student in this school? And, and those.
May I respond to that?
Just let me add the last and you can fire away. I raise this because, question because as you know, I have, I have serious doubts about some very fundamental things about your curriculum. One of them being how late you start English and the 90-10 model. I had questions about the 50-50 model, but I'm assuming that was an implementation problem. And the other one is whether, what I, here to be a fairly constructivist pedagogical philosophy is what it takes to educate kids who come, who are recent from, in families who are recent arrivals in this country and disadvantaged Hispanic kids. And, and my experience on that is simply I see a lot of schools that are doing a great job with, with that population and, and they, and I can't find any of them that are constructivists. So those are my concerns.
Thank you for letting me just speak to this, and I'm sure that Ms. Fleming can add in a little bit more as to what type of curriculum that they've previously developed. I'm speaking purely to the legal standard and the regulations, and the legal standard that's required in the charter petition itself is the process that they're going to develop for, basically developing their curriculum. So that it is not technically required that they provide you with, you know, a year's worth curriculum, and I understand from the historical relationship here, I understand why you'd want some demonstration of that curriculum, but it's the process of developing the curriculum that they're required to provide at this stage and in light of their, you know, developing their board and developing this action plan that you might, you know, give that some consideration.
Well, I, let me just tell you an experience that I had involving a charter school. I, I went on that assumption and got shot down for having insufficient detail about curriculum. And not just shot down here, but also shot down at the state level. They want, they wanted detail and you say, and we, we had an attorney like you, and the attorney told us exactly what you said, but then he said, he added, but legal or not, they want detail. And I, and, and this goes back to, and I just don't know the answer, what set of hoops you're, you're going to have to go through? If you're going to go through a, a rigorous review by the CDE staff that then gets passed on to the CD, to the state board, which would be the way it gets to the state board, I presume, I, I would predict that you would get that kind of demand, but, but I just don't know that, what that process is going to be. Do you know?
The process is that if you approve this at the local level, it gets basically approved at the state level, almost pro forma, because you've approved it. Now, if you deny it, then that's when these, you know, a deeper look at the charter would be, is it through the appeal process at the county level and then the state level? So that's the different levels of that process.
Well, I understand that to be the case with charter school, with schools that have no history, but I understand that this school, although we're trying to create it de nouveau and, and make it ahistorical, it in fact has a history that it's going to have to live with.
And I think that the CDE does not have a firm process for this particular thing because it doesn't happen very often. And so when you look at whether it's a new.
But you're giving a firm response. You're saying, oh, all they're going to just do is stick to the law. If it's not a firm process, how can you be so sure?
I tend to believe that the charter petition that they're presenting is actually quite different than the one that they had presented before. So from my perspective, the CDE is, is basically going to treat this as a new charter. Now, what, I can't predict what they're going to do.
Well, for their sake, I hope you're right.
Just a brief comment if I could?
Yes.
Aside from all the individual particularities, including curriculum, what it boils down to academically is one of the key findings that's already been noted. The board can turn down the petition if it finds that it's demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program. That includes the academic program. In your discretion, and I'm not suggesting that you ought to do this, but I just want you to understand where the balance is struck. In your discretion as to whether or not the program that's being proposed can be successfully implemented, you are free to consider where it's coming from. And you can, as individuals, choose to view this as a new school that bears no relation whatsoever to the school that is operating now, or the converse. You have the discretion to take into account the historical past and any associations between the new and the old that continue to exist. So my bottom line point is that you have wide discretion, especially when you are looking at these academic-related issues with respect to whether or not you think that this program is not only educationally sound, but also is demonstrably likely or unlikely to be successfully implemented.
Thank you. Mr. Deacon?
I'd like to ask a timeline question. The next step, as I understand it, is the staff will provide a report, correct, to us? And then the, that will come back to us, but it'll also be available to the Adelante petitioners. They will then be able to provide changes if they feel the need to based on?
Well, I assumed from our resolution that we'd have a back and forth process. Actually, all I've told you is that we'll have that done by a certain time, and it would be up to the board then, would you like to have special meetings? Would you like to schedule it for the, the last meeting in April? Have a discussion then with Adelante and, and give them direction at that point?
I, I guess I'm wondering at what point we get the final version because I'm assuming that once we get our staff report, we may have some other ideas about things that we, we would like to see in it, but we need to give them time to respond to those.
Yes, exactly.
And then create the final version, which when, we then vote up or down. So I'm just trying to, in my mind, visualize the timeline here.
Yeah, I would like to know specifically, is there a drop dead date? And if there is a drop dead date, I'd like this board to work within that timeframe. And so if we have two or three months, great, we can go back and forth many times. But if in fact there's a drop dead date that has significant financial or other ramifications, I'd like to know that because then I'd do my best to try to get my fellow board members to meet those deadlines, but if we're not in a position to tell us what that is, that makes it very hard. Mrs. Fleming?
Yes, I just have a couple of, of comments to respond to the deadline. We have 243 students at our school right now, and if there is not a school for them to be housed out in the fall, and we won't, we don't find that out until June or May, those families don't really have the option of, of investigating the best option and the best fit for their child, depending on where they live, et cetera. And we also have a staff of teachers who, again, to reiterate that point, and then we would like to very aggressively pursue funding to provide a lot of professional development above and beyond what our current budget is. If we don't get a charter school startup grant, then there, there are a lot of other opportunities for money that we would like to immediately pursue. And as you know, those 188 schools that are on the list are all going to be scrambling after the same money that we would be interested in getting because many of them are converting to charter schools and will be pursuing those funds, et cetera, or will be looking for money. And so we, for us, the urgency is now, and ideally, obviously, we, we would have several more months, but we do feel like there's been a, a great deal of back and forth at this point. And so I guess my request would be that we, there are a couple very clear things that have come out of this for us that I think we feel good about as a group, that we would be happy to present another draft, taking out, you know, addressing some of those renewal process and things like that, particularly from the, the legal side, and would like to return that to you immediately. And then as soon as your staff is ready and made the recommendations, pose it to a vote. We, we ourselves are trying to live by the idea that you never finish a product, you just have a deadline. And so we could theoretically go on and on and on, but we would really like to move forward with implementation and don't want to burn ourselves out in drafting. We'd really like to focus all of our energy, funding and efforts on implementation of a high-quality two-way merchant program.
Just so my fellow board members understand, I asked for this special meeting tonight to start that process with my understanding that the 27th, which is 20, 23 days from now, was an important date. And so I don't know what could be done by the 27th, but I would like to at least consider trying to work within that timeframe, make the changes, get the reports, and take a vote on the 27th. Dr. Noel?
Well, this, this is the public hearing. It has now been formally submitted.
Yes.
So they're going to have to take it back and I, what are the rules of the game about revising something after it's formally submitted?
The drop dead, drop dead point by ed code is 60 days. It would be June, or excuse me, May 23rd.
But in that period, it's still, it's still subject to revision after it's submitted in that 60-day window? I, I didn't know that.
The, the answer to that question is that if the petitioner wishes to make substantive revisions, they can pull it and they can resubmit it, and the district and your board can accommodate that process by having one more hearing. In other words, there's no requirement that you start over and have two, two new hearings. You could then schedule your one hearing, which presumably would be for the purpose of taking final action. That would be, well, theoretically, you'd have 60 days from the point when the revised petition is sought, but I'm not hearing that anyone is interested in doing that. You currently have until approximately May 24, but you're all trying to accommodate the process. So there's opportunity if changes are being proposed, but I think I would suggest, if I could, that if there are going to be changes, that rather than waiting for those, that maybe staff just gets a memo, here is a list of the sections that we'll be submitting changes to so that the staff review on the balance of the sections, which I assume is going to be most of it, can proceed expeditiously.
Mr. Price?
Dr. Noel? Go ahead.
Mr. Herron, may I speak with Mr. Price?
Yes.
Does, is this, is the public hearing a separate occasion from the vote?
Well, it's a separate occasion in this instance, but it doesn't have to be a separate occasion.
You can have the hearing and vote that night.
Yep, but this is the public hearing. We don't need another one.
The, the answer?
If they're going to pull it and resubmit it.
No, I don't think so. I think this is the public hearing. You can take our, what, you can take what we've told you.
Well, I think in terms of what the public is going to, what, if the public is listening to this, when do they get a chance to have a public hearing on the new version of it?
So it.
Is that not a problem?
Certainly, and, and the board has the choice. Once there's a new petition filed, you can have two hearings if you want, but presuming that the overall scope of the petition isn't going to be changed greatly, then the board could reasonably assume that there will be plenty of opportunity for the public to make any comments that they want during the course of the one hearing that would be intended for the board to finally take action. In other words, it's up to you. If you hear comments and you decide, gee, we can't take action tonight because there's new input here, then you'll have the time to be able to do that. But presumably, the process can go forward without that necessarily having to occur.
Mr. Price, this is a public hearing. It seems ludicrous to me to think that we can't make any changes in the next 60 days and then have a hearing to vote on it. I mean, what's the purpose of public hearing other than to get public comments and let the petitioner make changes and then we come back and vote on it?
Well, I'll just cut through it, and the simple answer is you can.
Thank you. Ms., Mrs. Parker?
Two things here, and one is that we need to keep in mind that this is a charter, a new charter petition that has come to us. We have had charter petitions come to us in the past, and we will have charter petitions come to us in the future. I want us to be very careful that we don't set some sort of race precedent, like just running through this as fast as we possibly can to accommodate requests from a charter petitioner that may not meet our needs. We have 60 days under the law, and we need to take as much time as we need to take to do a good job. Our staff need that and we need that. When we, when I started to speak, and I think when a number of us started to speak, what we all said is, we're giving you some preliminary information here, but we cannot give you definitive information until we see a staff report. And so it alarms me to hear you say, we're going to race off and make the changes that you suggested, because I don't know what I would finally suggest until I see that staff report. And that's why I'm very willing to have a special meeting, perhaps a week later than the meeting where we discuss the staff report, but we're all going to look at a staff report, and we may each have different suggestions. And I think the idea that we're going to try to craft that into a final, perhaps acceptance with conditions on a charter, I think that that is putting too great a burden on this board to try to do in one night, and it's not fair to the charter school because they can't give any, you know, they'll be giving input on the fly. And so I, I really think that we need to meet on the 27th, if that's the correct date, and then perhaps meet a few days after that to try to accommodate their timeline so that it can still get to the state board, if possible, on May 14th. And I hope that their lawyer is correct and it's going to be pro forma and we just, you know, they've got a spot reserved and it's just a matter of putting it in. But I think we're going to need that time.
Mrs. Cudero?
Well, I, I agree that we don't want to rush through this. We don't want to do anything that isn't going to be a, a good decision. But I also think that there's, the issue of timing isn't just financial, although undoubtedly there, there's virtually no question that the sooner the petition is acted upon, the more financial options the school will have, assuming that it's approved. And that the, that delaying it cuts into some of those options. But I think more important to me is the issue of the, the human toll on, on the families and the students who are waiting to know where they're going to be going to school next year, and even perhaps more immediately, the staff who are in a much more sort of, I think precarious position, having to determine whether they're going to be applying for other positions because that's a much longer process. that's a much longer process. So, I think it behooves all of us, as representatives of the students, certainly feel an obligation to act in their best interest. And of course, we're constantly weighing, what are the best interests? Certainly, they're served by making a good decision. They're also served by making an expedient decision. So, I'm just wondering if April 20th is an option for a second reading, as it were, and then a decision on the 27th, as originally, I certainly thought that was the case, as Mr. Herron did.
Can we get a response from Dr. Sarves?
I have, yes.
Dr. Noel? Well, I'd like to give Mrs. Cordero's question answered. Is, can whatever needs to be done be done by the 20th instead of the 21st?
Well, we could move that timeline up a little bit, although we heard that we're not going to get the changes until, well, hopefully, very soon. I mean, if we could get-
Let me just, those two sections, it will take not very long.
Okay, if we could get those tomorrow, we could actually deliver it at a meeting on the 20th, if that's what you would prefer. I mean, we'd just be working on it through the weekend anyway, so.
I have to note that Mr. Price over there is shaking his head.
About what?
No.
Well, you can do whatever you want. I'm gonna be steelhead fishing at that time, but-
I see.
I don't think that is gonna make a difference. You have other staff that can sit in for you.
But I will say that we would not have it to you in advance of that meeting. If we showed up on the 20th with the staff report, you would not have it the previous Friday.
I just have to say, I think-
Dr. Noel had his hand.
Yes. I'm feeling increasingly uncomfortable about being kind of rushed into it, as Mrs. Parker was talking about. It has been slowed down because we have, as a board, gone through this process of giving them as much as we can, so they can write an acceptable charter. Now, that was a decision that was made, knowing that it would take time. They could've turned in a charter and said, here it is, here, judge it, give us a decision. But no, they wanted to, understandably, learn more from us, so they could write one that has a better chance of passing. So, it sets us back. But I don't think that trying to get this through even by the 27th makes sense and sets an appropriate precedent for dealing with new charters. This is not the last new charter we're gonna have.
I want to speak about the precedent.
Mr. Herron, I'd like to add one thing. And I was deep, I was especially concerned when somebody said something about the 13th. That was said earlier, and that's not, did you hear that?
Yeah, it was from-
Okay, okay. That's not-
That's not on the table.
No, the petitioners are not available on the 13th.
And part of this is, and I would make-
That's why we had tonight's meeting.
Part of my appeal is on personal grounds. I simply won't be here from the 13th through the 20th. A long-planned vacation.
I'd like to comment on the precedent issue. I mean, I don't think we will have a petition come before us, where we have a 250 students and families waiting to make a decision, a staff sitting in front of us, who have jobs who might not have them, but if they can find one, they might take it. And then we lose the best of the best, possibly. I mean, I think that this is not gonna be a precedent from that standpoint. That we're not gonna have this same second set of circumstances, probably. And if we do, we need to face it. But this is a new charter, but yet it has factors on it that, no, it's not gonna be a precedent. If it is a precedent, it's a very clear precedent that you could judge in the future. But it's not like judging this new charter with a other new charter that might come along. So, I don't buy the precedent issue at all.
Well, it's so, it's a, sometimes it's a new charter, and sometimes it's the old school. And it seems to me that we're not being very consistent here. I mean, if it's a new charter, it's a new charter. And the fact that the school existed and failed and is being closed is independent from the new charter. We've been hearing this all evening.
Well, I personally don't mind setting a precedent that we would act on behalf of students and staff in an expeditious way. So, if that, if those set of circumstances were to come before us again, I would hope that we would give it, that we would use this as a precedent and take that into account.
Mr. Herron?
I just want to make one thing clear, that may not be clear to the board. The staff report requires, in addition to just going through the checklist, writing a narrative report that is gonna comment on very substantive things, including the measurable outcomes, academic standards. But it also requires that a very carefully crafted set of draft findings be prepared, that would allow and support a board decision both ways. In other words, there have to be almost reverse findings. And based on, as you could imagine, from some of the discussion that you've heard, that's not a slap-it-together type task, and it's gonna require some work and some time. And certainly, I think you've heard from the superintendent by the 27th that that could occur. But I'm just not confident from the standpoint of giving you the product that you want to have and making a final decision, that doing it earlier than that on the 20th is realistic.
Mr. Herron?
Mrs. Fleming?
I just wanted to comment that we kind of were under the impression that this process was proposed to us by the district, that we would bring it first publicly here to get feedback. And I believe that our community was under the impression that the staff had been looking at a draft, and that we had been scrutinized, and the feedback that we received previously was from school, it was two pages of feedback. I know there would be more, but I was under the impression that most of those 12 pages, 14 pages, sorry, 14 pages, sorry, from the staff. So, we were, so just to respond to the point of putting pressure, I just want you to know that where we were on the process is, we felt that the staff all along was looking along with us. And so, the pressure that we're putting here isn't to say, okay, now you've seen it for two seconds, make a decision. We really did feel that the staff was working along with us this time. And so, we felt a little blindsided when we asked for criteria for a charter, and there wasn't really anything shared with us. And then yesterday, the day before this public meeting, and that could be ignorance of what this district public process is about, but we also didn't receive any feedback there. So, I want you to know the pressure is not coming from an expectation, you just flip this. The expectation is that we've already been through that process. And so, now we find ourselves in a bit of a quandary. So, I just wanted to respond.
Let me just make it clear. I had requested that the initial petition come to the board on March 1st, so that we could avoid all of this. The criteria for staff review is very specific. It's spelled out in items 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. And item 5 in the petition does not contain reasonably comprehensive descriptions of all of the following, has another 16, 17 items following it.
But Dr. Sarves-
That's really the review document.
Now, when was this document created, and where did it come from, this checklist?
This was created cooperatively with legal counsel.
But when?
This last week.
Yeah, so it wasn't available for this entire process. So, I mean, they did get something put to them that was not part of our district policy.
Well, Mr. Herron, it's public information. It's in the California Code of Regulations.
I'm talking about this document, this checklist.
But we can expect them to have read the ed code and the California Code of Regulations. They have an attorney.
And the State Board of Education, because it's very close to what the state board uses, the matrix for reviewing. It's very close to what all county offices use, and what many, many districts use, with very little variation. It's just a standard evaluation to-
Mr. Price, I'm just saying that when they asked, what is our checklist, what is, whatever they'd be judged on, they did not get this document, this checklist. This checklist got to them five, you know, yesterday. And so, if this had been in existence, you know, when they asked a couple months ago, it would've made the process a lot easier. Mrs. Parker?
Mrs. Cordero and Dr. Noel and I have seen what one of these reports looks like, and it really is very, much more detailed than anything that you have seen before, coming from the Adelante Group. And it is incredibly- Time-consuming and labor-intensive for a staff to put together. Our timeline gives us until May 24th to put that together. My suggestion is that we instead have staff come back with that April 27th, and then meet the first week, you know, one week after that, for a final vote. That is expediting the process quite a bit. It's, we're talking about giving staff an extra week to do the work before we take a final vote. And frankly, I haven't heard anything that says that that's gonna be a problem. We can get that, assuming the state board has reserved a spot for you, then you'd still get the-
Well, actually, I just looked up on my iPhone, and the next state board meeting is May 5th through 7th.
Mm-hmm. So, we would need to meet-
Ideally, for both parties concerned, I think it would be great to have a charter either approved or denied by that time, because we could then go through an appeal, or, you know, get on the next marker in July.
And I just want to ask one quick question. I mean, have you gotten a guarantee that if it gets to you by, say, May 1st or May 2nd, that you will still be on that docket for a CDS number?
The deadline, the timeline that I presented to the state, the CDE, was April 27th, because that's something that we had talked, all talked about, just internally, thinking that that would be the next board meeting, that it would be approved, you know, either approved or denied. What I wanted to maybe present is, I could email, her name is Joanna Guardia at the CDE tomorrow, and maybe forward the email to Dr. Sarves's office, so he could see the string of what has happened so far, and propose these things to her, and get some information to Dr. Sarves's office tomorrow.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Mrs. Deacon, please.
I would like to say that I don't want to compromise the thoroughness of the staff report by rushing. I feel that that's really critical, and I don't, I understand that those of you who put this together felt like you'd already gotten that, and maybe there was not adequate communication to you about what, the kind of report that the staff actually would prepare. But I want our staff to have enough time to put it together. I want enough time to review the staff comments before I come back and talk about it. And I don't want to rush either. So, you know, if that means meeting towards, you know, the early part of May, and we can find a time to do that outside of our regular meeting times. We've already, we have four meetings this month already. If we scheduled another special meeting this month, it would be five. No, we're meeting with the city, the city on the 23rd. So, I mean, I want to be able to really focus on this and not, but also focus on all the other work that we have to do. And so, I don't want to feel rushed.
Mrs. Cordero?
Do we know what the date is of the first Tuesday in May?
The 4th.
The 4th.
Every, all the documents need to be, would have to be FedExed and received prior to May 5th. I would imagine probably a couple days prior to May 5th, to the CDE staff, who are gonna forward it to the SBA, the State Board of Education, prior to their meeting on May 5th. So, that's why I had proposed to the CDE that the deadline would be April 27th, to give them a week to receive it and forward it onto the state. But we could find out tomorrow if there's anything that would expedite it more. But we'll have to be, we have to send a copy of the charter, all our legal documents, to the state via FedEx, as soon as the charter's approved.
I, because I agree that, and Ms. Parker is correct, having seen what the staff report is for a charter school, it is extensive, and it does, it is labor-intensive, et cetera. I also feel a little bit, I don't know, as delay is on, and I don't know if Mr. Herron feels this way too, but I was kind of also thinking that the fact that we were working together was the, I know it was characterized as it slowed down the process. I thought it was speeding up the process, so that there was a lot of this give and take, so that when it came forward, we would be, you know, a lot of this would be worked out already, and that process would have kind of started already. So, it is a little bit difficult, because we are up against a, I mean, I don't know if we want to call it a deadline, certainly a timeframe that makes things more difficult or less difficult, depending on whether we meet it or don't. So, I'm concerned that if we wait until the 4th, and the meeting is the 5th through the 7th, that almost makes it impossible for them to meet that deadline, to get it on. And then, that means that it doesn't go forward, it's not just that it doesn't happen in the beginning of May, it's that it won't happen until July. If it was gonna happen at the end of May, that would be something different. But it won't happen until July. That's a huge difference.
Are there some dates at the end of April, before-
Friday, the 30th?
The other point I would like to make, and Mr. Price made this suggestion, which I thought was a really good one, that was that the group, based on what we've said tonight, could provide a list of those things you're willing to change right away, so that staff doesn't spend time addressing those things. Because if they're gonna go away, then they can focus on the things that remain. I wasn't sure if one of those things was a willingness to go for the three years, because I think that's important for us to know now.
Are you asking me that question?
I am.
Certainly, that's not ideal. When we talked with Kathy Lynn Homelyer, she thought that maybe we would be able to show growth in a 90-10 model by the end of three years. The problem with a three-year renewal is that that's really technically at the end of two years to show growth. So, a three-year renewal technically is like a two-year, although we do understand that the linchpin of this whole decision that you'll make really isn't about all these technical pieces, but it's more about whether or not you believe the group is demonstrably able to make this school happen. And so, all of these details are coming about as a result of that. And so, you know, that's, I think, what it all comes down to. So, if three years is what is a deal breaker, then certainly, we'd make a deal on three years, because we want a quality, high-quality two-way merge in school for our community.
May I just point out that the term is really up to the board? I mean, in your motion, you could impose whatever term. For a new charter school, you have up to five years. If it's a renewal, then it must be five years. But if it's a new charter, it's up to five years. And you could impose other things in your motion. You could say that we approved the charter as proposed, with the exceptions of, and you could exclude things or add other provisions. I mean, it's all up to your motion.
Dr. Noel?
I'd like to go back to the staff report. If I understood Mr. Price correctly, the staff report really is a legal document. And I would certainly want to see a legal review of it before I was asked to vote on it.
So, just, if I could, Mr. President, just one follow-up comment, really a suggestion. Why don't you consider just scheduling your hearing on the 27th and see how it goes at that time? By then, you will have formed, you will have evaluated whether or not you need additional time. You'll also hear, hopefully, more definitive information from the petitioners with respect to whether a few more days matters. Because generally, they require a lot of agenda prep before something goes on the State Board of Education, and it takes way more than a week. But I wouldn't pretend to know what the facts are here. But depending on what the board sees from the staff report, and how comfortable it is tackling the issues, looking at the findings, the board can decide whether it's prepared to take action, whether it needs to take action, or whether it wants to put it over a few days.
May I also add the suggestion that perhaps you put a hold on your calendar for Friday afternoon, the 30th, April 30th?
April 30th, Friday, okay.
Those are very good suggestions, Mr. Price and Dr. Sarves. I think, Mrs. Cordero, is that, yeah, okay.
And the 27th?
The 27th, that's our normal meeting.
Regular meeting.
And if we can make a decision that night, so be it. If we need to make, to go to the 30th, we could do that too. Or wait until May, because you may know something different. I think that's, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, thank you all for, oh, there you're gonna, okay, okay, good. Thank you, thank you very much. We're gonna take a 11-minute break, bring back at 9:15.
Dave, how's it?
Does any, any, well, I guess with, with the public comment on Adelante. E2, report on effective inter-district charter school students on basic aid districts. Dr. Sarves?
Meg Jete will give this presentation. Meg Jete is Director of Fiscal Services.
Everybody laughed. Hi.
It's not you, Meg.
There should be a public comment.
Good.
As you know, you've all seen this in a board brief, and I was told to bring it to, for a conference item. And so, I'm all, I'm sure you're all aware that on the 15th of every month, we, the Santa Barbara Elementary and the Santa Barbara High School Districts gives the charter schools their allocation of in-lug property taxes. So, basically, the calculation is pretty much the same way as the revenue limit works for our district. They, you're allocated a certain dollar amount and you're alloc, then you, we have to provide local funding, which is their local, their in-lug property taxes. Whichever is equal to their revenue limit or their general purpose block grant, so for example, Caesar Chavez gets 1.2 million. If our property taxes divided by our ADA comes out to more than 1.2 million, we only have to fund them up to the general purpose block grant. So, they can never be a basic aid charter, not a dollar more. As you can see here, I'll go through the calculation here. It says the total elementary property taxes is 28 million. You divide it by the district ADA and, and the charter school ADA, which is 5,0564, which gives me a per pupil of $5,045. Then we take our charter schools, which is roughly 1,200, 1,200 ADA, times it by the 5.45, 5,045, and you get $6 million. This is elementary only. So, therefore, we get to the point where we have, we, you know, our elementary district, you know, is part of these kids are our children and part of them are inter-district transfers. I did the analysis that the total charter inter-district net, transfers is 662. So, we times that by tax per pupil, which is the 5,045, which is what we give them in property taxes. Because right now, everybody is right there. The property taxes almost equal the, the general purpose block grant. So, they're not getting backfilled by the state by very much. So, the loss of revenue regarding this, 262 times the 5,045 is 1,301,790. Of those children, of that money, we do get reimbursed for the kids that come from revenue limit districts. Lompoc, Carpenter, Lompoc, Oxnard, Buellton, Solvang, Santa Maria, Benito, we have a variety of places. However, the big loss is from the districts that are surrounding us that are basic aid. They don't have to pay us anything. So, for example, at one of our charter, at Galleta Union School District, we're educating 159 students for a loss of revenue of $800,000. Pope, Carpinteria, Montecito, and College are the biggest, are biggest ones. And then that means that we're losing 1.2 million dollars a year, every year. So, therefore, on the backside of the next page, those are the revenue limit districts we get 70% from. But we only get 70 for, 70% of the deflated base revenue limit, which is even less. If it wasn't deflated, we'd be getting the 18.35%, but we get the deflated revenue. So, it's an additional loss of $33,000. As you can see, the total inter-district transfers by site, Caesar has 44, Peabody has about 69, and Santa Barbara Elementary has about 149 ADA from inter-districts, which is 71% of their population. Any questions?
Santa Barbara Charter.
Santa Barbara Charter. Santa Barbara Elementary Charter.
And what's the solution?
Well, basically, you really, you can't tell a charter where to, that they can or cannot take these children. It's, as you heard the attorney say, that it's county, it's basically statewide, but basically countywide. The only solution that I see is capping them. And we talked tonight about capping, you know, they had a 300 cap. My recommendation for Adelante would be a 265 cap to keep them right where they were, right where they are now in Caesar Chavez. Because the more they grow, the more chances we're educating other kids, you know, or the more they grow, the more mon, the less money the elementary gets because it gets diluted. The more kids you have, the more diluted your property taxes become.
I need to clarify that. There isn't any, well, in education code, it's clear that any student in the state could attend this charter. So, the district may not limit the area for students to attend. There's really no provision for limiting the growth of the charter either. However, there are space limitations and facility limitations, and it may be the case that if a charter school wants to grow beyond what is in the MOU with them, then we might place the remainder of the charter on another campus. Or in the case of, of Santa Barbara Charter, if they wanted to grow significantly, they, they could apply for Proposition 39, facilities from Galleta Union.
But that doesn't help us financially.
No, no, but we really can't cap the charter itself.
Mrs. Parker?
May I ask that we get, we have public comment and then we go ahead and have our discussion?
Bev Abrams? I'm the Director of Education at the Santa Barbara Charter School. Our mission is to cultivate learning in arts, academics, and relationships. We take our mission seriously and we do our best to realize it, both with children and in our relationships in the community. In this spirit, we've, we've striven to create a positive and reciprocal relationship with the district. To this end, we've always behaved honestly and acted in good faith. Historically, the district encouraged us to take students from out of the district because there was an economic advantage. We brought in students from private schools and other districts. This is obviously, the perspective is changing now as the district is moving towards basic aid. We want to remind you that our placement at the Galleta Valley was not our first choice. Over the years, we've, we very extensively explored being placed behind San Marcos Growers, at Hidden Valley, at Lacumbre. And ultimately, in 2006, the board made a commitment to us that we, they made a proclamation that our permanent site would be at Galleta Valley. We made a, at that point, we decided to invest in our facilities there. And there was also the consequence, when people knew we were going to be in Galleta, our student body gradually became largely Galleta students. I need to say, though, that as part of our policy, Santa Barbara students have always had priority in our, in our enrollment process. So, one of the things I wanted to say is that we are, in our conversations with the CDE, discovering that there may be options for negotiating with districts around us to recoup some of the money. I don't know a lot about that, but it's our hope that the district strives as it's trying to find good financial solutions to its issues, our issues too, that they'll keep in mind that their decisions have shaped our demographic, the district's decisions, decisions have shaped our demographics. We hope that you remember that we are always cooperative and responsive, and we have made a practice of keeping children in mind when we're, and children and education in our mind at the center of all of our decisions, and we hope you will too.
Thank you. Mrs. Parker?
Thank you. I want to start off by saying that as much as, as we've heard here that the district cannot restrict charters and force them to only take students from inboundry, the charters can't restrict themselves in that sense either. I think that, you know, many of them would be perfectly willing to make that kind of restriction if they could, but they can't. It is ed code. And what I've seen from the, the public and some of the comments in, in the press, there was definitely a misunderstanding that it was simply our decision and that we were being foolish by allowing them to continue to take students from outside the district. I think bottom line for the charter schools is they want to be sure that they get their per pupil revenue limit and get their charter block grant. And I don't know that there's necessarily any desire to be a burden to any district. They just want to be sure that they have the funding that's coming to them. And I know that we, we all want to keep that in mind. This is a difficult situation, though, because it's, it's strange to me that state legislators have allowed this. Even if we were a revenue limit district, there is ed co-language that allows you to recoup, but the CDE says that it's not enforceable from basic aid districts. And so, essentially, if, if it wasn't our local property taxpayers paying for out-of-district students, it was the state. But the state is, we are the state. It was simply a bigger pool of taxpayers that are supporting students from basic aid districts that are at charter schools. I have no doubt that we have students of our own that are at charter schools, at Olive Grove Charter School, for example, or at other places where we, now that we've transitioned in elementary and are transitioning into it in secondary, where we should be paying for them, and, and we won't be. So, I do think that this is something that the state needs to look at. As it stands, though, there is no law to fall back on. I do see this as a real opportunity for the county education office to show leadership. They don't currently have any charter schools that they're responsible for. They have a new charter that's just come to them, and they have two charter appeals, one out of Santa Maria Benita and one out of Lompoc Unified that they may end up approving and being responsible for. I think it's very hard, it will be hard for the county to make that transition with just one or two charter schools that they're responsible for. It would be much easier to create a charter school office and have a lot of charter schools that they're responsible for. I think that would support the charter school movement in the county and the reality in our county with the way parents commute and their desire to have their kids near them. This would always be a countywide, a countywide benefit because everybody's coming from multiple districts to all these schools. So, my hope is that the county ed office would take a leadership role either in sponsoring charters themselves or in facilitating communication about the MOU process. Because, Dr. Sarves, I know that you've approached these districts, our surrounding basic aid districts, about MOUs. And I think morally and ethically, those districts should have stepped forward, but the reality is that they haven't, correct?
That's correct. And we have no leverage.
Well, there's currently no incentive for them to do it. Except for shame, perhaps. Peabody and Caesar Chavez are in sort of a different place than Santa Barbara Charter. Peabody, I was interested to note that their current inter-district ADA is 68.92. And obviously, they have a priority enrollment process that we're aware of. But as of this morning, there were 63 boundary Peabody students at Adams School. And they don't have a place at their home school because of these inter-district transfers and presumably, they're children of faculty, they're, they have siblings at the school over the years. But I think that our charters need to be very, very careful because it, it has an effect. And Peabody went over, there's a facilities cap for Peabody, for, there is for all three of our charter schools. They went over, and essentially, they went over to the tune of about a teacher salary. So, a teacher in the Santa Barbara districts will lose his or her job because Peabody went over. But Peabody is, you know, they have a waitlist and they're in dire financial straits, and it would be so much better for them if they were able to bring more portables onto their campus, which we would not allow as it stands, and take some of their, some of their boundry students from Adams, for example, that, that are at Adams that should be at Peabody. It would be a real benefit to them. So, I feel like we're all, everybody is suffering in this situation. One of the things both with, that we, I touched on with Caesar Chavez, but I see with Peabody as well, is our facilities MOUs are problematic. And I think Mr. Price's comment about how we need to change to annual MOUs, annual facilities MOUs that provide facilities based on in-district enrollment is one way to address these issues. I had had the same message that Dr. Sarves had about how you can't, you can't just set a cap arbitrarily. But if you provide facilities for in-district students, if you provide facilities for 200 students, then it becomes very difficult to, to play with that too much. So, for example, for, for Peabody right now, if we were to provide facilities for in-district students, it would take it down next year from 750 to, you know, approximately facilities for 680. We have portables on that campus, we could, and obviously, this is not something that we would do next year. I wouldn't suggest any changes until MOUs come due, but we could head in that direction so that we make sure we're not providing facilities, you know, both as a cost for that, but encouraging inter-district transfer students to come in. Santa Barbara Charter is, is a difficult case because it was founded in 1993, long before Proposition 39 came in. I feel like Proposition 39 issue should have been addressed over the years, and instead it's just kind of been rolling over and rolling over. I really value the historical relationship we've had with Santa Barbara Charter. But speaking as a board member for Santa Barbara Community Elementary property taxpayers, it's very hard for me to say we can keep going on the way we're going on when in fact, the school has always been located at Galleta Valley Junior High. And yes, there were many reasons why it ended up out there, even though we wanted it to be within the district. It's out there, it's essentially become a neighborhood school out there, but it's serving the students of Galleta Union. And I think that we need to have a dialogue about what that means when the charter comes up again in three years. And I absolutely appreciate how cooperative Santa Barbara Charter has been and how you've always, you've always tried to provide the best for students of the community, the greater Santa Barbara community. And, and I appreciate that. But the reality is, is that Galleta Union certainly is responsible for your facilities in a way, because of the, your student population in a way that we're not. And it's questionable to me whether we're, we're the appropriate authorizing agency for you at this point. And I think that that's where I'm at right now.
Mrs. Cudero? No?
I was just going to say ditto. I mean, I think you summed it up. That's, yeah, that's where I, where I am. I mean, those are all the issues that we're grappling with. And we have, as, you know, as you've pointed out, other school districts that, you know, for, you know, just purely ethical reasons, should be reimbursing us for educating their students, but they have no incentive beyond, you know, good conscience to do so. We have no leverage to, you know, encourage them to do so. And so, we're, we're essentially kind of stuck in this spot unless, as Ms. Abrams pointed out, the, the charter schools themselves are able to find, you know, funding sources or reimbursement, you know, pathways. So, it's, you know, ditto, everything you said.
I would just chime in with one final thing, which is that it's short-sighted because we, this South Coast will have other charter schools that come forward. And as they do, there's no incentive for us to enter into an MOU with any of our surrounding districts based on their current behavior.
Can I, can I make one comment? You know, I, I feel, since two of my charters are here... You know, I feel, since two of my charters are here, not my charters, but elementary charters, I want to say that, "Don't shoot the messenger." I'm just here to, you know, this is my job to show what happens behind the scenes financially. But I feel I have a very good relationship with the charters. And I talk to them upfront every time about things like this. And so we have a good communication, so I want to put that out there. Another thing that I wanted to speak about is when we were up at the symposium for the basic aid districts, I had a conversation with SSC in regards to asking the, our surrounding basic aids, "Help me." And there's a bigger picture out there of what's happening with basic aid districts. The state of California wants to come after their excess property taxes. So if they, let's say, in five years, we're Montecito at 23,000 per ADA in fund balance. Okay, let's all pretend, okay? Close our eyes and pretend.
And 100% reserves, right?
I think we're $89 per ADA in basic aid. But my point is that once someday, when we get there and we're really plush in basic aid, the state may turn around and say, "I want it." You can, they want your excess property taxes. So SSC's advice to me was, "Don't fight amongst your basic aid because the state wants your excess property taxes." So I went in that meeting thinking, "Oh, you know, I'm gonna get these basic aids." And I came out with, "I better see a bigger picture down the road." Once we're in $23,000 per ADA, this will not be an issue to us. Do you understand? Because if they, capped by facilities, whatever, they won't get any more than what they're entitled to. They won't get that excess property taxes. So we're hit with a hard year. We got this going on, we got the 18% deficit, which is putting us into basic aid. We don't really belong there yet, but we're being forced into it. And then the whole economic environment. And so it's a bad year. And when you go into basic aid and you teeter in and out, it's, I've told you guys, it's a horrible place to be in, and we're forced into it. So it's bad all the way around. Yay, Arnold.
I'll just pose this question, and, you know, we took some significant steps to push into basic aid. If we had known this fact, plus if we had known property taxes enrollment, did we in fact go into basic aid too fast?
Well, yeah, because of the 18%. But because of those inter-district transfers that we wanted out, we closed our borders for last year, they didn't really materialize like we thought. We're now going after them when we should have been more proactive about it in the beginning of the year. So we haven't seen that yet. But if we're getting less money because we're getting less, we need to not have as many children in there to soften the blow of that 18% deficit.
But we didn't foresee that at the time. We didn't foresee that the state budget would put us in this position now.
And I think taking the long view, it will be validated as the right decision. I'm not concerned about that. I think, Dr. Sarvas, you told me the other day about some of the reserves of some of these basic aid districts, Montecito is 100% reserve?
33,000 per ADA in their reserve.
I know, I know. I would just like to think a little bit harder about this county piece because it certainly seems to me that in many ways, that's an optimum solution. And I don't know what kind of leverage we have with the county. But I think that, as Mrs. Parker mentioned, that there may be growth in charters, you know, with, you know, under Obama's administration, we certainly are seeing a move there. And there may be more that are coming. And then, in the end, the county might be the good location to house all the charters in the county.
What's involved in a memorandum of understanding between the districts is created. What would that take? How do you envision that might be if they would agree?
We could write it up, propose it to them. And I'm telling you, over my dead body is what we're hearing.
I mean, what would be the, how would you go about doing that? Would it be a gradual phase in that they would start reimbursing us for these costs in some way?
I would, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know what to propose to them because they really have no reason to give us a dime.
Yeah, if we were to go to another district and say, "Well, gee, could we phase into an agreement so that you would willingly give up $800,000 from your budget?" They would be hard pressed to find a good reason to.
Well, Mr. Heron, if I may?
Yes, Mrs. Parker.
I mean, one good reason may be that in that process, we could phase it in as opposed to another process where they become completely responsible in one year. And I think that there are some incentives there.
That's what I was wondering.
But there are other basic aids, there are samples out there. Actually, a lot of basic aid districts do have MOUs with each other. And basic aid revenue limit neighbors have MOUs with each other around charter schools. There are actually communities that are cooperative about it. I think the problem in our community is that it's so established that, that it has built up over the years. I mean, essentially, you could look at it that we have one district that has, has been being subsidized by, it'll be millions and millions over the years that they've been basic aid at this point by having this charter school be our responsibility. So I think that you can take the long view in that way. But I just think it's hard unless there's some sort of transition.
Worst-case scenario, three years when a renewal comes up for a charter, what are our options? If we don't want to renew it?
No.
Charter renewal for financial reasons. Rounds the circle.
But if it doesn't have 80 of our students, we don't provide facilities for it.
That's right.
Well, we may be pressed to, to collect more rent than we currently get. I mean, we've charged a pro rata share as if it's Proposition 39 facility request. We, you know, we'll probably be looking under every rock still in another three years, another five years. I mean, we expect the state budget crisis to continue for a number of years to come. And that'll probably be one of the items on the budget list to see if we can maximize rental, rental fees. But that's a number of years down the road.
I wanted to ask a question. I'd like to have just a little clearer. If the charters, property taxes go up, the scenario you said, but the charter schools' share does not. Do I understand that correctly?
That's correct.
Let's say tomorrow, our property taxes go up by 10%. Their base revenue or their general purpose block grant remains stagnant. So if they're 1.2 million, and now by property tax calculation, they should be getting 1.4, I fund them at 1.2. And right now, all our-
That's because you're, that's because you, is that because you want to or you have to?
I have, I only, I only, law is, fund them up to the purpose grant.
Yeah, that's a very important point, and I don't think the public understands that either, that charter schools are revenue limit districts. They get a revenue limit, it's typically a little higher than other revenue limit districts. It was certainly higher than we were getting for our charter schools. But they don't have any other option. They're going to be that way forever. They won't become basic aid districts, they won't share in the advantage of becoming a basic aid district.
As property taxes go up.
As property taxes increase, yes.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And one comment, too. If these charters, let's say tomorrow, they all go to the county, we pay for our kids. That's it.
Better do that one again. So the county doesn't, county's not basic aid, county's not revenue limit?
County does not provide any funding for the charter schools. The districts that the charter, the kids come from pay in lieu. So if I have 10 that go to Peabody, I pay that 10. So for Santa Barbara, we would be paying for the, I don't know, the 60 kids. And Galida would be paying for the 108.
And that, that's fair.
But we were talking about this, the basic aid districts have no obligation to reimburse us for our property taxes, do they for the county? Would the county get revenue?
I can answer that one because I have looked it up and the answer is yes.
Okay.
It all should be, just like the county gets their money, the basic aid district should be paying for the charters that, yeah.
Okay. Anything further on that? Thank you. We'll go back to D1.
Dave Hatjunk, would you please address item D1? And item D1 is?
Denial of bid, well, there's a new version, and I don't have it with me. Didn't we get notice that there's a retitle of that? Denial of bid protest by-
Oh, I don't have that.
Wasn't it rewritten?
No, the only thing, the only revision was in E News, only the first part of the title was published in E News, and Barbara Kiani republished it with the whole title.
I knew I saw something, okay.
But we've not, we've not changed a board item, no.
Denial of bid protest by Schrock Contracting Corporation, adoption of Resolution 09-10-41, finding that the cost estimate was reasonable, and award of contract to Frank Kipper Construction Company for new bleacher installation at Eling's Aquatic Center, Dos Pueblos High School.
And that was pulled for some questions, so?
Yeah, I pulled that. We heard Mr. Nuschel provide his timeline on this. And I believe that he has misunderstood the amount of the inspection cost. We did approve a contract at our last meeting for something in the neighborhood of $10,000 for the inspector for this project. And I have to admit, and I called Mr. Hatjunk when I first read that contract, because these are prefabricated bleachers that the, that the manufacturer said would take a week or less to put on the pool deck. And so it seemed almost incredulous that we would be asking these donors to pay $10,000 to put those, to observe and inspect the installation of prefabricated bleachers on a pool deck. And so I wanted to give Mr. Hatjunk the opportunity to clarify that that is not necessarily how much they will be spending. And could you address a little bit about how much realistically, in your experience, something like that should cost?
Well, the requirement to have the DSA inspector on site is a requirement by the Division of State Architect, DSA. And based on that requirement, we asked for a proposal from Nolan Construction. In order to proceed with that purchase order, I need to have the money in the bank so the district is not at risk. I mean, that's basically the way we set up these site-funded projects. That does not mean that they're gonna have to spend all the $10,000. If the contractor works faster, it requires less hours of inspection. We pay the inspector less money, and we refund the difference to the Santa Barbara Community Aquatic Center. But if the contractor works slower, and it does take more time because the contract allows for a set amount of time, per the contract documents, that contractor is entitled to take every one of those days. And in fact, that contractor is entitled to take additional time. We would charge them liquidated damages if they did so. But they're entitled to take extra time and be charged the liquidated damages. And we would then backcharge that contractor for the extra inspection time. And then it would come out of the contractor's funds rather than the South Coast Community Aquatic Center. But you cannot, once you demand that a contractor completes something by a certain date or you, we don't approve schedules, we review them without exception. You need to be very careful with the verbiage that you use because if you start dictating to a contractor, "You will do this at the end of the job," he's gonna hit you with a big change order and say, "Well, I wasn't planning on doing that. You directed me to, so this is the additional cost that I'm gonna charge you for being on time. I planned on being late and paying the penalty." So, you know, it's an approximation of how much inspection time it's gonna require to do the job. Hopefully, it takes less, and they spend less, and we refund them the difference.
And I guess, I'm just having trouble, and I'm sure these laypeople are as well, trying to visualize how the inspection, there's some ADA work that's like $2,000 worth of ADA, which I think is like a sign in a parking place, right?
I'm not sure what the total scope is, but yeah.
And then there are some cutouts in the bleachers where wheelchairs go, that make, that provide a location for wheelchairs to be situated. So I'm having a real hard time envisioning, and I know they are, how that could possibly cost $10,000.
Well, the inspector needs to be there to monitor the installation, to make sure it's done according to the contract. You don't just come through at the end of the project and look at it and say, "Okay, I think that meets the contract." The DSA requires him to be there to monitor the work while it's going on, to ensure that the proper, that what is in the plans is what is on site, that the actual method of attachment is done correctly, that the actual tests on torque for bolts were required is done properly. And as the project goes, there's all these requirements that Division of State Architect puts on this inspector. And this inspector's license is on the line. If he doesn't inspect and document and do his daily reports, the inspector also has to tell every day who's on site, what they're doing, what work has taken place, taking pictures. There is an unreal amount of documentation on any project that has Division of State Architect approval and inspectors on site. And these inspectors, even though we pay them or the South Coast Community Aquatic Center pays them, they answer to the Division of State Architect, they do not answer to the district.
So it's not like a building inspector who just shows up when a job is completed and signs off on it?
Or he shows up in typical residential housing. Your inspector will show up and view the framing when it's complete. He did not observe how many nails you drove in at every stud and things like that. And with the school construction, per the Field Act and per the requirements, it's a lot different ballgame. And hopefully, we don't spend the whole $10,000.
Right, right. And would the whole $6,000 be spent on the bid process?
Well, the $6,000 was to cover, I believe, I have to look back and make sure, it was the cost of printing the documents, the cost of advertising. And a lot of those things were encumbered but not spent the last time South Coast Community Aquatic Center asked for an update of the financial documents. So while the statement was true that a lot of that money wasn't spent, some of that money was encumbered and not yet invoiced to the district.
Right. I guess I'm trying to find a way to give them a little bit of good news. And so I was wondering if in fact, you think we will hit the $6,000 one?
The good news is, any money that we don't have to spend, we don't spend, and we give them back at the end of the project.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure, I appreciate my board members indulging me on this since I was one of the people that helped fundraise this money and many years ago now. And it's been a long process, and it's been hard on everybody to wait this long. And I understand there's multiple reasons why it's taken this long. But, you know, people are understandably eager to get going on this. And the bid came in $20,000 more than they'd originally expected.
I would say, in my opinion, the district has jumped through every hoop that we knew possible to try and expedite this project and work through this project and accommodate South Coast Community Aquatic Center.
When the bids came in higher by $20,000, or was it $27,000, did they have the right to just stop the project and not go further?
Yes. In fact, we contacted them and asked them, "Do you wish to proceed with the project?" Because if you don't have the funds or you don't want to proceed, we would ask the district board to reject all bids, and which I would, I would not ask you to approve the contract unless we had the money in a district account. And they did, they have delivered a check for the money in the district account per the MOU. Per the MOU, I have not yet invoiced them for the, for the amount that we, that you approved for the inspector. I would do that after, because I intended them both to be on the same board agenda. So that paperwork would not go out, in my opinion. There's no sense in doing that until you approve the project because until we approve the project, we wouldn't issue a purchase order for the inspector. So they have not yet received an invoice for that, nor have they forwarded that money to the district yet. But we would want that money forwarded before the PO was released because otherwise, there's no funds on deposit to pay the purchase order. When the invoices come in, that puts the district at risk financially when we don't have a budget to- That puts the district at risk financially when we don't have a budget to take care of that.
Okay. Mrs. Parker?
Go ahead.
I just want to chime in that, I mean, this is a project that normally, if the district were taking it on, I think the only way we could do that is through a bond. And I just so appreciate these, these groups that have come forward and done private fundraising to sort of take a load off of local taxpayers in providing these, you know, improved facilities for our schools. I just think it's terrific what they've done.
They've raised an incredible amount of money over the years. It's amazing.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion that we approve item D1 and go ahead and deny the bid.
And award the-
And award the, yes, et cetera, et cetera. An adopt resolution 0910-41.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that ends our agenda. We will adjourn at 10 o'clock.